Yeah. It's like I'm talking about my brothers. My graduation in high school, six hundred and four, I'm like sixty-five. Because when they were in high school, the three high schools were out counting some. They went like six hundred and fifty, and they're like, Jamie, twenty-eight people by the way. I'm like, that's six hundred and seven is not the point. That's not ten. Yeah. No, I did. Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, because I got embarrassed to pull them when I was not standing up there for basketball. And it was early. We're standing in the lobby looking at all the graduating classes and his teacher was like, and I go, you guys redo it? She's like, what are you talking about? So we're like, four people in that graduating class, and she goes, that was the two of us. Wow. That's crazy. Yeah. Yeah, call person is not, basically, I wish that I could tell them all at the time. I'm like wishing. They actually have a little cannon. But I remember I was small. But there's probably a couple of them. They just nobody, which I guess worked out, but it didn't everybody. Yeah. A lot of people going as friends. Yes, I ended up. So Jake says that management for a trust, that a trust has, they need people. They don't have a model, they don't have these people that are, that's why I'm calling them back. They said, maybe that's where they want to get important. I said, it's really going to get up to you if you want to do it. Saves money, and it's trying to get those on maybe the base capital blocks. I don't know if I can wait until a couple of weeks, so I'll call you back. Uh, no, not that or that in Delano. Because all those, I guess they're all set personally. And in Delano, it's a whole other way to that, but they've got it so many places. We would have high expenses, yes. Well, where his office building, because that whole part is full of fucking, I think there's a house right there. Uh, that was calling it an alley, it's a little bit of a stretch. His parts all painted over, and then it turns into grass eventually back down. I would drive one or two city trucks down. And for me, that's what constitutes an alleyway, being able to drive down. Yeah. Well, if it does, then I can just write a letter. That's what I'm thinking. And sign it. I don't know. Which I believe in. The endeavor has never been clear, never been realized. Yeah. I'll take that for a. I don't know. These are, uh, between, uh, sports and, and hockey, and it's great. Yeah. What happens tonight? Some days are bad days. Your, uh, new ones are working over there? Is it stuff you can do yourself? I'm gonna say if you can. Somebody else has set up a, make that hard.
I've had some, I've had some busy days.
We have a, a council member that is running behind and, but is on the way. And with your permission, we're gonna wait till Councilmember Hawthorne appears any moment, I think. So anyway, we'll, uh, we'll go into session shortly.
Yeah. I'm, I'm ready for the mail. Well, my mom works for me and gives her a charity. She's doing it for her parents in Florida. And so I had to send her a quick picture. She's like, I don't think it's quick enough pictures, but, but I told her I said, I'm so ready to send this stuff. It'll make. Yeah. Like this. Oh, yeah. I guess I'm dying, I'm ready. I'm gonna sit back and put it the way I like it, just a little bit on the table. Man, I hate it. I hate it. I wake up at night, and I'm just like, oh my. I told her, my mom and dad wrote me a picture that she's doing for her church. But I, it's, I'm absent. I have to send her a picture every day. And they put them up at the church, and I get sponsored for everything, and funny. And, uh, she's kind of in the church, because they're giving her, you know. Yes. But I'm, I, you know, she called me this weekend, and I told her I was talking to her, and I was like, Mom. I hate to sound like a kid, but.
Are you taking pictures? Get my background left to left.
Nope, I didn't do that. But I can already tell you, when she asked me, and I said, Kate, you got two others?
Yeah.
Duck me. I'm sorry, I can't see you. I can't see.
We'll let the record show, it is thirteen minutes after six o'clock. I will call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Durant City Council of November the thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Before we have the invocation and our flag salute, and, uh, Councilmember Hawthorne, would you lead us in our flag salute as, when we come to that moment? We want to take a minute tonight to do this. You know, we have a lot of good things going on in our community, a lot of good things going on in our country. But we have some folks in need of our thoughts and prayers at the same time, the folks in California. Many of you may have family or mem- family members affected by that. Councilmember Grooby has a granddaughter that's in need of our thoughts and prayers. But I'd also like, if there are no objections, to dedicate tonight's meeting in remembrance of North Ogden, Utah, young man, that's the mayor, Brent Taylor. He's served as the mayor of North Ogden, a population of seventeen thousand since 2013. He's thirty-nine years old. He was also serving his country as a major in the Utah National Guard. He was killed in the line of duty on November the fourth, nine days ago, in an ambush while serving his country on his second tour in Afghanistan. He had also served two tours in the Iraq War. Mayor Taylor is a hero, a patriot, a devoted husband, and a wonderful father of seven young children. On a recent Facebook post just days before his death, he wrote, "As the USA gets ready to vote in our own election next week, I hope everyone back home exercises their precious right to vote. And that whether you're a Republican or Democrat, we all remember that we have far more as Americans that unite us than divides us. God bless America." I've been reminded personally of his very saying, "We have far more that unites us than divides us," often, and I try to remember that. We want to thank Major Taylor, and for his paying the ultimate price for his country. And for that, I'd like to dedicate, we would like to dedicate tonight's meeting to Ma- Mayor and, and Brent Taylor. I want to ask that we have a moment of silence, then I'd like James Dalton to lead us in our invocation, lift up those in need. Then we'll stand, actually, folks, maybe we'll stand now, those that can, for the invocation, and remain standing for the flag salute.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for the breath of life you give us, the help you give us, Father. Father, we lift up those who are suffering from disaster, whether they be in California with the wildfires, still recovering from the hurricanes that ravaged the East Coast. Father, we pray that you give those families comfort, Father. We pray that you be with those workers who are out there on the front lines working, keep them safe, Father. Pray, pray for their leadership, Father. Pray for our country's leadership. We pray for the, the ones that are newly elected, Father, that they'll be a spirit, not a party, but a patriot to them. Father, we pray that you give them the courage to lead, to do the right thing. One nation under God. We pray that you give them that strength, Father. Or we lift up those who serve the military and, uh, day in and day out all over the world, Father. We lift up Brent Taylor's family, especially in his recent passing. Father, we pray that you be with his wife and seven kids and their families, Father. Give them the strength to get through this situation. Let them know that he was doing the right thing, Father. And we thank you so much for the country we live in. We thank you for those freedoms that we have, that so many of us take for granted, and so many want. But we pray that you be with us tonight during this meeting, that it be civil, that we conduct the business of the city in a godly way. We thank you for every good thing, the faith, birthday, and Jesus' name. Amen.
To the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recede it, please. Clerk, recall the roll, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Here.
Councilmember Grooby?
Here.
Councilmember Dills?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Here.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Here. For the record, all members are present. We have a full quorum. Our first order of business, item one, under Presentations, we have a presentation of a proclamation for Small Business Saturday to be observed on November the twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. And I want to invite Ms. Stephanie Gardner and Amber Frost?
Foster.
Foster, close to the front. And Tim, councilmembers, if you'd like to join me.
Well, and before we do the proclamation, and, uh, I'm not allowed to bore you guys to do it, but I'll be reading the proclamation just in a minute. Stephanie, our Main Street Executive Director, does an excellent job. I think we'd all agree on that. And I think, before I read this, I'd like for her to make a special announcement, and you might mention if anybody wants those bells of hay or that kind of stuff, too. But, uh, Stephanie, let the folks know what's going on.
Hello. So first order of business, if you need hay bales or pumpkins that are left over from our fall decor, they're up for grabs. So if you see any in the flower beds tonight or tomorrow, feel free to take them. They were going quickly, because we're gonna be putting out Christmas decor. And the next thing that I wanted to let you know, and if you follow Durant Main Street on social media, you might have seen it today, but we were actually nominated for a TV show called Small Business Revolution, and it's in its fourth sea- or entering into its fourth season. And the concept of the show is if whatever small town they choose, they give a $500,000 Main Street makeover, putting it back into their small businesses, as well as just the look and the branding of their Main Street program. So about a month ago, many of our community members, maybe some of you, nominated Durant to be on the show, and there were 12,000 towns that were nominated. And so the last few weeks have been pretty interesting, going back and forth with the producers, and, you know, they had lots of additional questions after we were nominated. But of course, you're still kind of in a pile of 12,000 towns. But we found out today, right before lunch, that we made the top twenty list out of these towns. So yay! So we're definitely not close to the finish line yet. We're kind of just getting started. But over the next month, they'll start whittling, you know, this down. By December eleventh, they'll have narrowed it down to the top ten towns, and then it just continues from there until they choose one town for season four that will get the $500,000 makeover, and they'll film all of season four in that town in spring of 2019. So we're still, you know, we have a lot of work to do, but please follow the Durant Main Street Facebook page. And we really need to start rallying our community, because if we're named in the top ten, which will be announced December eleventh, from that point on, it's up to a public vote. So we're really gonna need our supporters that, you know, want to be behind Durant there, ready to vote, as soon as, if we hopefully make the top ten. So lots of things will be happening on our social media in the next month, lots of videos highlighting good things about Durant and Main Street. So please let us know if you'd like to be a part, you know, helping us promote that. But the biggest thing you could do for us right now is just to follow us and share things about it, because of course, the producers from the TV show are watching everything that we're doing on social media right now. I know, because they told me. And so we want it to look encouraging, like we have a community that's engaged, and like we're ready for the challenge. Of course, if they come here and spend $500,000 to give our town a makeover, we want them to know they're in good hands, and I know they would be in Durant. So please just follow along and help us get to that next step.
Thank you, Stephanie. Some good news, Michael. Yeah. Yeah. I think our city manager may have a comment or so later in our meeting, but we're doing a proclamation recognizing local small business. And you can interpret that maybe any way you want, but, you know, shopping local is kind of the bottom line on that, supporting our local businesses. But from the city of Durant, a proclamation, whereas the government of Durant, Oklahoma celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 65, 65.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. And whereas small businesses employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 90% of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community, and whereas 89% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long, and whereas 73% of consumers who reportedly shopped small at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family. And whereas the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small, independently owned businesses was to support their community, and whereas Durant, Oklahoma supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore, Jerry L. Tomlinson, Mayor of Durant, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Saturday, twenty-four, 2018, as Small Business Saturday, and I urge all of our citizens of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Stephanie, we present this proclamation to our Main Street and all of our local small businesses on behalf of the city of Durant. Thank you for what you do again.
I just want to give a shout out to Amber Foster. She's one of our small business owners downtown, and so we actually have a merchant meeting tonight at seven o'clock, but I said, hey, come early with me and get a shout out. So if you haven't been to Foster Creativity, visit her. She's a good supporter.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Council, we'll go back to our job. We'll now pick up with item number two on our agenda this evening, under Consent Items. These are to help streamline our meetings. The Consent Items portion of the agenda groups the routine procedural and self-explanatory items together. They're voted on in a single motion, one vote. However, if any council member requests further information on a specific item, we remove that from the consent items to be considered on a separate vote. Councilmembers, are there any, we have items two A through two M. Are there any items to be removed for consideration under item number three? If there are none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number three on our agenda will require no action. Which brings us to item number four, under Information Items, and we've made a little change in our agenda, uh, uh, sequence. Are there any council members that require or would like to request a department report from any of our departments listed under Information Items? We appreciate all of our department and staff, as they prepare these reports with really good information regarding not only their department, but their, the employees involved in that, from the airport to our solid waste, to our police and fire, and public works, parks, our library. I saw Robbie somewhere. Hi, Robbie. We appreciate all that. If there are none to be cons- okay. Okay. City manager would like to make a few comments under our information.
Excuse me. Just piggybacking on what Stephanie and the small, small, Small Business Saturday, how important that is to our community, I just wanted to kind of let everybody know, every month, we supply the council and to the public via our financial reports on our sales tax and how it trends, and I'm sure everybody's sick of hearing this, but we, our city runs primarily on sales tax and our enterprise funds. And this month, our sales tax, and I did pull the rest of the states, cities, and towns throughout the state, and we're pretty much on par with quite a few of them, but our sales tax for the month of November was down.
Main Street Facebook page, and we really need to start rallying our community, because if we're named in the top 10, which will be announced December 11th, from that point on, it's up to a public vote. So we're really going to need our supporters that, you know, want to be behind Durant there, ready to vote, as soon as if we hopefully make the top 10. So lots of things will be happening on our social media in the next month, lots of videos highlighting good things about Durant and Main Street, so please let us know if you'd like to be a part, you know, helping us promote that, but the biggest thing you could do for us right now is just to follow us and share things about it, because of course, the producers from the TV show are watching everything that we're doing on social media right now, I know, because they told me. And so we want it to look encouraging, like we have a community that's engaged, and like we're ready for the challenge. Of course, if they come here and spend $500,000 to give our town a makeover, we want them to know they're in good hands, and I know they would be in Durant, so please just follow along and help us get to that next step.
Thank you, Stephanie. Some good news, Michael. Yeah. I think our city manager may have a comment or so later in our meeting, but we're doing a proclamation recognizing local small business, and you can interpret that maybe any way you want, but you know, shopping local is kind of the bottom line on that, supporting our local businesses, but from the city of Durant, a proclamation, whereas the government of Durant, Oklahoma celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 65, 65.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. And whereas small businesses employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 90% of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community, and whereas 89% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long, and whereas 73% of consumers who reportedly shopped small at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family. And whereas the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small, independently owned businesses was to support their community, and whereas Durant, Oklahoma supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore, Jerry L. Tomlinson, Mayor of Durant, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Saturday 24, 2018, as Small Business Saturday, and I urge all of our citizens of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Stephanie, we present this proclamation to our Main Street and all of our local small businesses on behalf of the city of Durant. Thank you for what you do again.
I just want to give a shout out to Amber Foster, she's one of our small business owners downtown, and so we actually have a merchant meeting tonight at 7:00, but I said, hey, come early with me and get a shout out, so if you haven't been to Foster Creativity, visit her, she's a good supporter.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Counsel, we'll go back to our job. We'll now pick up with item number two on our agenda this evening, under consent items. These are to help streamline our meetings. The consent items portion of the agenda groups the routine procedural and self-explanatory items together, they're voted on in a single motion, one vote, however, if any council member requests further information on a specific item, we remove that from the consent items to be considered on a separate vote. Council members, are there any, we have items 2A through 2M, are there any items to be removed for consideration under item number three? If there are none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Item number three on our agenda will require no action. Which brings us to item number four, under information items, and we've made a little change in our agenda, or sequence. Are there any council members that require or would like to request a department report from any of our departments listed under information items? Any at all? We appreciate all of our department and staff, as they prepare these reports with really good information regarding not only their department, but their, the employees involved in that, from the airport to our solid waste, to our police and fire, and public works, parks, our library, I saw Robbie somewhere, hi Robbie. We appreciate all that, if there are none to be cons- okay, okay. City manager would like to make a few comments under our information.
Excuse me, just piggybacking on what Stephanie and the small, small, Small Business Saturday, how important that is to our community, I just wanted to kind of let everybody know, every month, we supply the council and to the public via our financial reports on our sales tax and how it trends, and I'm sure everybody's sick of hearing this, but we, our city runs primarily on sales tax and our enterprise funds, and this month, our sales tax, and I did pull the rest of the states, cities, and towns throughout the state, and we're pretty much on par with quite a few of them, but our sales tax for the month of November was down approximately a little over 7%, so that's not too concerning, but it's something that we have to keep an eye on. As city managers, we always have to keep an eye on. And so going back to what was discussed earlier, one of the things I just want to let everybody know, is in the next couple of weeks, you'll see our street department put out some signs, we've got kind of a new campaign that's going to be promoting shop, shopping local, and the campaign is, keep your green on this side of the red, and we're just trying to go out there, and we'll have signs all over town, and basically reminding you, if you can buy that item here, we prefer you do, and in fact, I'll take it to another level, this sounds kind of crazy, but if you're going to buy a big ticket item, and you go down to Best Buy, or some shop down in Sherman or McKinney, you go, wow, I love this big screen TV, I'd love to have one, go look at Amazon, or somebody else, we now collect the sales tax for Amazon, and we get a pretty healthy check from Amazon as well. So if there's something that you spot down south of the border, it's a big ticket item, and you can buy it and deliver it, we will get the sales tax right here in Durant, and so that's important. We first want you to see if you can buy that item from one of our local merchants, no matter how big the business or small the business is, we prefer you do that, because that helps put money back into our community, but if there's an item where you just absolutely cannot get here, look at those options, because that will actually be a huge benefit to us. So anyway, just wanted to let everybody know, you'll probably see those signs up, and by the way, the signs were made right here in Durant and bought right here in Durant, so I'll make everybody assure that, but you'll start, you'll see James' crew start hanging those out here real soon. Thank you.
Tim, I have a quick question. How long have we been getting the sales tax from Amazon?
The state law changed, I believe Judy, was like March or April of last year, I believe.
Actually, I think just earlier this year.
Was it? I think it was July of 17, I believe, is when we first started collecting it, I believe. So it's somewhere, I was, I'm pretty sure it was either the spring or the early summer of 17 is whenever they, they started coming in. And originally, the sales tax on the, there were some merchants that weren't doing that, because they have second-party vendors for Amazon, and I think we've got a lot of those loopholes kind of closed through our legislators now, and so, but yeah, we're collecting it, and it's a, it's a good chunk, we're not allowed to say what it is, but it's a good chunk of change.
Week half of it came from my wife.
Well, my wife.
And we can encourage that now.
Yeah.
But it hadn't been that many months ago that those sales tax revenues were not available to municipalities in the entire state, through Amazon and our, any of those that didn't have an actual physical presence in the state, and the legislators, both at the state level, and I think at the federal level, and actually, Amazon stepped up to the plate, I believe, and finally recognized that I think legislation was about to happen, but that's been, I'm sure it encouraged more business for the Amazon shoppers and the others online, but that's really been good for the, not just the state, but for municipalities as well, for how many ever months it has been, and we'll see that, as we've witnessed over the years, growing by that, the online internet sales, growing not by millions, but by billions every year. And that was a wake-up call, I think, to a lot of people as far as the, the sales tax arm of that.
Yeah, and we got our first, I just pulled it up, we got our first check from Amazon in April of 17.
We consider Amazon local now, okay? That may not be the right thing, don't print that. We shop local first.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that entire amount of that tax goes to the city, and we call it a use tax?
I don't believe so. Judy, it's not the entire amount, is it, the nine point?
No, it isn't like any other. I'm talking about the city part, we don't have to use that to pay the DIA, or to pay the DCFA, and we do have to pay the school, because it's specified, and I think Tom and I went through this at some point.
That is correct for the use tax.
On the use tax, yes. On the school side of it, but I believe it comes in with the rest of the, the funds from the Tax Commission as.
Exactly, so we don't, so that's all, that's ours that goes to the city, we don't have to give a quarter of a cent to the DIA, or a quarter of a cent, two quarter cents to the DCFA, and the, because it wasn't specified, but in the school bond, it was specified, the all use tax.
Yes.
I don't know the answer to that, because I don't know how, how the Amazon, if it's a use tax, if it's just sales tax that is collected, it, it's collected at the same rate, and it's actually sales tax and should be split out. I don't know if it's classified as use tax, or if it's collect, if it's sales tax, if it's collected, it's sales tax, then whatever percentage is earmarked, is still earmarked as sales tax. Now, if you go buy a refrigerator in Sherman, and you pay the use tax here, then you're right, it's, it's not specified and split out, but if you buy something from Amazon...
It depends if they have a presence in Oklahoma.
If, if we, if it's collected as sales tax, it's still a portion, just like the sales tax we collect from any of our local merchants.
Right.
Okay, we'll move on then to item number five, under our agenda, under administration, and we have 5A, consider approval of resolution 2018-29, authorizing participation in the O-MAG recognition program. Who's doing that, Tim?
Cindy. On October the 23rd of 2018, we had our second annual O-MAG recognition program, and as part of our participation in that program, O-MAG will, upon completion, award funds to the city, those have been earmarked for transparency, anything projects to do with transparency, this resolution needs to be approved by council and submitted to O-MAG for us to receive those funds.
Any questions for Cindy? Non-entertaining motion?
Move to approve resolution number 2018-29.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Item 5B, consider approval of the employee holiday checks for 2018. Tim?
Mayor and council, this was budgeted for the fiscal year 1819, and this is our annual holiday check for our employees, it's $350 per employee. We had a request this year that it be distributed in November, so they can go on Small Business Saturday and spend it, and, which we highly encourage now, so that's, that's where we are, and we're asking tonight, because of the balance of it, to be approved.
Move to approve. Motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Item 5C, consider approval of change order for the contract C-2018-58 for the purchase of police vehicles, Chief Hauser.
Mayor, council, thank you for hearing tonight. If you remember, July and August, we, as a council, approved the purchase of some police units through Enterprise, I'm sorry, purchase, leasing through Enterprise, and as plans sometimes do, it didn't work out as, as we thought it would. The 2019 Ford SUVs that we had specked out were, were not available. The order, the deadline, we got it in on time, Enterprise got it in on time, I believe it's through no fault of us or them, but Ford had come back and said, we took too many orders, and those vehicles are not going to be available. So Enterprise has given us some other options, and you'll see in your packet, option A, B, and C. Option A, I believe, is for some 2020 Ford SUVs, the price is significantly higher than the 2019s, and then they looked at some 2019 Tahos with two different options there. Initially, we had discussed 50% of the outfit cost, and that was going to be $3,000 for the Ford SUVs, and the Ford SUVs have a, have an outfit package assigned to it, and it decreased the cost of the third-party vendor outfit. The Tahos don't have that option available, so we had to increase the outfit costs for the Tahos. So that option B would be staying with the $3,000, and then the option C would be going ahead and, as we agreed, pay the 50% of the outfit cost, which is actually about $4,200, a little bit more. Originally, the outfit cost was about $9,000, now it's about $8,400. The city, I believe, the best option's going to be option C for us at this time, and if approved, we can probably get that rolling pretty quick. John Holland from Enterprise, if you'd like to hear from him, and he can probably tell us a little bit of more detail about what happened, maybe explain it a little better than I, if you'd like to hear from him, and we'll entertain any questions, if you have
Chief, I have a question regarding the term, the actual terms of the lease, and maybe you can explain the difference between B and C. As I read it, it appeared to be B and C was the same vehicle, same price, we pay more on C for the outfit cost, with approximately the same monthly payment, but then the, the book value at the end was less, despite paying more outfit cost and the same payment, the book value at the end was less. Can you explain that?
So the book value is actually what we're writing the lease down to, so by paying more money down upfront, it actually reduces the amount. So basically, the way to look at it is you're paying $42,000 for that vehicle, down to a $3,800 balance, because you put that $4,000 instead of the $3,000, it actually reduced the capitalized amount.
And is that the, that price at the end, what the city could purchase that vehicle for?
Correct.
Okay. That makes more sense. It's not a trade-in.
That's actually a better thing.
Right, it's not a trade-in value.
Correct.
It's less, it's a price we can purchase it for that's less.
Correct.
Okay, fair enough.
And I know John, go ahead. John didn't explain it, that, that purchase price, did you see there, 42, 960, that, that's the purchase price of the vehicle, including the, the $8,400 outfit cost, so that, that's a turnkey product.
Is that correct?
Chief, what's, what's the preference of the troops and yourself?
You know, I think we were okay with the Ford SUVs in the beginning, they're, they're not available, and the Tahoe served us well thus far, some minor issues with them, but I think they'll be fine. Asking around, I don't think anyone has any, any heartburn about staying with a Tahoe product, they're happy with them.
So essentially, changing the Ford 2019 for a Tahoe 2019?
Yes, that would be my recommendation.
Same amenities, same equipment, et cetera, or?
Yes, the same, same, same things, the outfit, the aftermarket equipment would be in the Tahos that we would have had in the Fords, yes, sir.
I mean, it sounds like 2019 Ford's not available. It's either that or 2020.
That is correct, and they said they're not going to build them for us.
2020's available for about five grand more.
I blame you.
Is that right?
So, so did we, yeah, that is correct, man.
Or, yeah.
And, and quite a, quite a few months away. The Tahos, they, they can estimate it be here February, March, we're hoping for January, but you know, February, March is probably more accurate than the Fords, June at the earliest.
I'll move to approve the change order, going with option C.
Second.
Does that adequately cover it?
Did you say option B as in boy, or C as in Charles?
C.
C?
C, yeah.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, motion is for option C.
Correct, yes, sir.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Mayor and council, thank you, guys, and I'd also like to thank John for driving down from the city to be here tonight to answer any questions. Thank you, guys.
Texas, item 5D, consider approval of resolution 2018-33, establishing an arts and cultural advisory committee for the city of Durant. Tim?
Mayor and council, before you tonight, is a resolution authorizing us to move forward with the plan. On September 11th of 2018, you authorized myself to move forward with, get with staff and proposing guidelines, and identify participating committee members, which we've done, we've developed all the rules, duties, goals, and I'm sure there'll be other things that will come forward. This is an advisory committee that has been in discussion for a while now, so, and this is, you know, we don't have all the details as the day they're going to meet, or the times, or anything like that, that will be established, but you have before you the resolution that breaks down all of, all of the participating members, as well as, like I say, all the rules, and, and what their, what, what their guidelines and reports back to the council should, should look like.
Any questions for the city manager? If there are none, entertain a motion.
Move to approve resolution 2018-33.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Item 5E, consideration authorizing the city manager and staff to develop guidelines for the creation of the Durant Streets and Infrastructure Task Force. City manager?
Mayor and council, we would like to propose also the creation, the creation of a Durant Streets and Infrastructure Task Force, that would allow two of the council members, which would not create the quorum for those meetings, along with city staff and appointed community members to study the infrastructure issues, and gain a better understanding of the city's budget and funding strategies and capacities, and make a recommendation back to the city council in a timely manner, I think would probably be appropriate with, if, once this is established and approved, is to have a, probably a 90 to 120-day report, or I'm sorry, timeline for them to meet and, and report back to the council as far as the recommendations. This would, like I said, kind of encompass both the council, the, the public and the staff to, to do so.
Questions for the city manager?
Move to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Think it's a good idea. Clerk, record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Item 5F, consider National League of Cities, NLC, service line warranty program, and take possible action. Tim, are you, city manager?
First, I'm sorry.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm a little techn- And I'm sorry, I'm a little technology challenged here, so.
Okay.
Let me get.
I brought printed materials, too.
That's fine. You can put. Yeah. Ashley, how do you pronounce your last name?
Shaworski.
Sorry, what was your name?
Ashley.
Ashley. This is Ashley.
Yeah. Thank you.
Short for short. Floor's yours, Ashley.
Perfect. Well, first of all, thank you all for having me here this evening. My name is Ashley Shaworski. I know it's a tough one, and I represent the National League of Cities Service Line Program. Our Service Line Program is the only one that is endorsed by the National League of Cities, but also here in Oklahoma, by the Oklahoma Municipal League as well. The company, though, that I actually work for is called Utility Service Partners, and we administer this program. And we're a Better Business Bureau business with an A-plus rating, as well as we did win the Torch Award for Marketplace Ethics from the Better Business Bureau. So that is something that we are very proud of and are always striving to maintain that high level of ethical standards while conducting business. But what our program really is designed to do is to help address the public policy issue of our aging infrastructure. We know that cities like yours, all across the United States, really have been doing their part to either upgrade or maintain their public infrastructure, but the homeowners' portion of these lines were kind of being forgotten about. So that's actually why the National League of Cities went out and did research. They wanted to make a program like ours readily and easily available to cities and towns all across the United States. So they went out, did the research on your behalf, and we were the company that they did choose to provide this program. So what we would do is we would partner with your city in order to make our completely optional program available to residents, and we provide homeowners with protection on their external water or well lines, sewer or septic lines, as well as their in-home plumbing. And we provide these services with a complete turnkey approach for the city, where we handle all the aspects of the program. The marketing, the billing, the claims management and customer service, and there is absolutely no cost to the city if you choose to participate in the program, and the city does receive an incremental revenue stream for their participation as well. What I always think is the best benefit of our program is that it just really helps to raise awareness. Pretty much every city that I speak with, I hear the same type of thing, that if a resident does have some sort of issue with one of their external lines, most of the time, their first call is to someone here at the city. And I'm sure you've all gotten calls like that in the past, and then you end up not only using the city's time, but dollars, sending someone out only to determine that the issue is on the resident's half of that line. And then someone here is left being that unfortunate bearer of bad news, letting a homeowner know that these lines are not covered by the city or their homeowner's insurance. So that's really why I think of our program as a free public awareness campaign, because all of the residents here would receive a letter in the mail from us, and the beginning of that letter really is an educational piece, letting a homeowner know that these service lines are their responsibility, but that the city has partnered with us in order to make this program available to them. So that way, even if a resident chooses not to enroll, at least in the future, they are well aware of what their service line responsibility is, and that the city really tried to take a proactive approach at helping to educate them of this. Also, a huge benefit of our program is the peace of mind, because now the residents know for just a few dollars a month, if they want to, they are able to transfer the risk of these lines over to us, a company that has not only partnered with the National League of Cities, but also the Oklahoma Municipal League. And then that way, if they have an issue, they just make one call to us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and we would dispatch one of your local licensed plumbers or contractors to do the repairs. So that is a large benefit of our program, that we only use local area contractors for all of our work, and we do that for a lot of reasons. Mainly, we wanna keep as much money here within your local economy as possible, but also, your local contractors are familiar with your city's codes, and we'll make sure to do the work up to our standards, but also yours as well. And with all of our contractors, we do go through a detailed vetting process where we make sure that they are local, that they are licensed, that they have all of the proper amount of insurance. They don't have any type of open complaints with the Better Business Bureau, but we also conduct background checks and drug screenings, because we wanna make sure that it's someone that a resident feels completely comfortable with coming to their home, but also inside of their home. And then as for our coverage, we do offer three completely separate involuntary programs. We offer an external sewer line coverage, which would also cover septic lines, external water line coverage, which covers well lines, and an in-home plumbing. Our two external products are kinda set up identically, where we begin to cover those lines wherever they become a resident's responsibility, all the way to where they enter their home. So that way, if a homeowner is having an issue, whether it's a broken, a cracked, a leaking pipe, a tree root issue, a clog that needs cleared out, anything that really impedes the flow of those lines, as well as we do cover the thawing of frozen external water lines. A homeowner just makes one call to us, we send out that local plumber, and what they receive for their coverage is up to $8,500 towards each and every repair incident. So that is something that greatly separates us from other companies out there, is that ours is always on a per-incident basis, so we do not have an annual or a lifetime limit, as well as we do not limit the number of claims or incidents that someone can have in a calendar year. So they do always receive up to that $8,500 towards each and every incident, and we never have any type of service fee or deductible, because we would not want, you know, that $50 or $100 service fee to deter anyone from actually giving us a call and getting their issues taken care of. And then as for our third product, that one is in-home plumbing, and was really developed by request of our current municipal partners, as it kinda was that missing piece of the puzzle, and that covers any of the water, sewer or drain lines that are in the home after the point of entry, that either may be broken or leaking. It also includes any lines that could be embedded under a slab or basement floor, and coverage for the repair of clogged toilets. And this is very similar, where there is never a service fee or deductible, no annual or lifetime limit, never a limit on number of claims that someone can have, and for the in-home plumbing, they always receive up to $3,000 towards each and every repair incident. And we really do come to find that when someone chooses to enroll in any of our products, they are a little bit more proactive about getting their issues taken care of, 'cause you know everyone's always nervous to call that plumber, 'cause you have no idea what it's gonna cost. So now the resident knows the cost of determining what their issue is, and getting it taken care of is not coming out of their own pocket. And then I know, lastly, the big thing, or I guess I skipped one thing, another piece of our program is the revenue feature for the city. So what the city does receive in return for their partnership with us is 50 cents per month per paid warranty contract. So essentially, if a homeowner did choose to enroll in all three of the products, the water, the sewer and the in-home plumbing, then the city could receive up to $1.50 per month per household, and that is paid to in the form of a revenue every January. And a lot of our partners do different things with this. Obviously, anyone could do anything that they like, and some just put it into the general fund, but we also have some partners that have used it to help residents that may be having trouble paying one of their utility bills from month to month. Some have used it when a resident may have a leak and a large water loss, it can kinda go to help offset that aspect of the budget. I know you try your best to help when you can, and one uses it to help pay for their annual fall festival. So it's really however you, as the city sees fit. And then lastly, the big thing everyone wants to know is how we market our program, so we only market by direct mail, so you never have to worry about us calling, door-to-door, anything like that. We typically have three mail campaigns per calendar year, in the spring, the fall and the winter, and the reason why we have multiple campaigns is because we offer multiple products. But we would never send anything out to a resident unless we did have your review and approval prior. So before each and every one of those campaigns, we send you a digital copy of that marketing letter for your review and approval. We always want the city to have input on the message that goes out to its homeowners, but also know exactly what they are receiving. Once we get the approval, we let you know the exact date that we would send those out to a homeowner. And if for some reason we do not receive the approval, we never mail to a homeowner for that campaign. So the city always has complete control on if and when a letter does go out. To give you a brief idea of what that letter looks like, our standard is, the beginning really is that educational piece, letting a resident know that these lines are their responsibility, but then it's an introductory letter where the city would be introducing the program to its homeowners, but it clearly states that we're a separate company providing this, as well as it's always optional for a resident. It does go out with the city's either logo or letterhead, that way your residents know that this is the program the city's participating in, but the bottom of it has all of our information, our logo, our phone number to call with questions or to enroll, same thing with our website, they can go there for lots of good information, or enroll right on our website, or they can return that form right to us. So really, the city's involvement in the program is just in that introductory piece, but once someone chooses to enroll, all of the correspondence then is directly between us and them. We know that you all have more than enough going on here, so we handle all the aspects of the program. We do the marketing, the billing, the claims management and customer service. And just to give you an idea, we do have over 550 city partners across the US, and we do have 14 here in Oklahoma, and they're listed in there for you. And I know I've just rambled on for the last 10 minutes or so, so I'm sure you also may have some questions for me as well.
Questions for Ms. Ashley? City manager, do you have any comments?
Well, as Ashley stated earlier, you know, usually the first thing when a homeowner has a water or sewer issue is pick up the phone, call us, and we come out, address the issue, and sometimes we have the unfortunate news to tell them that it's on their side of the line, and for some of those folks, that can be devastating to their, you know, their budget, their annual budget for taking care of repairs like that. And this got, I've known about this program for years, and the municipal league has gotten involved in this, and I wanted to bring it before the council. Again, this is at no cost to the city. We do, we will have a small revenue generator out of this, and the prices, I guess we should explain that, too, and I'll let Ashley.
Sure.
Per-month charge.
Sure. We offer the three separate programs. Someone, if a resident wants to enroll, they have the options of choosing whichever they want, or absolutely none of them. They are all separate. The prices is, are $5.75, $5.75 per month for the water line warranty, $7.75 per month for the sewer line warranty, and $9.99 for the in-home plumbing. And someone can choose to pay us a lot of options, however they would like. We can send them a bill monthly, annually, they can set up automatic withdrawal from a checking or credit card, you know, they can pay online or over the phone, but no matter how they choose to pay us, they're never locked into any type of long-term agreement. It's always month-to-month for a resident. So if they need to cancel, they just give us a call, and we would refund any of the unused premiums.
But this is not mandatory?
Correct. It's completely optional, and we do not have any type of minimum participation. Really, just by partnering with us, the city's just giving the residents an option that they otherwise would not have.
All of the billing, I think you just kinda mentioned that, but all of the administrative work is taken care of by your company?
Correct. Really, the only involvement moving forward of the city is before each campaign, we send you that copy of that letter for you to take a look at for your input.
Tom, comment, please.
I don't see that the program itself is problematic. Just looking at the agreement, I've got a concern about numerical paragraph number two, the grant of the license, which grants the company the ability to use the city's letterhead. Maybe a concern that that will be misleading, and I know the text of the letter may identify it clearly, but that the residents will be receiving a letter that appears to come from the city for a third-party service. That would be my concern with the agreement, is that it gives the company, it says a non-exclusive license, but then later in the same paragraph, it limits the city to contracting with any competitor of the company, but that's really my only concern, is giving the company the authority to use the city's letterhead and logos in their correspondence to make it look like this, the letter is coming from the city. If it was just a logo on the side to say, this is one of the cities that we use, or that uses our service, that's one thing, but I think to grant an unlimited license for a letterhead maybe sets the city up for some potential liability if the citizens view this as a city service rather than a third-party service.
Would that be an issue with your legal?
I was gonna say, so with us, one part that is a requirement is the use of the logo. We can change it, I know it says, it's a non-exclusive, where you can give it to other companies, just not a direct competitor. We can change that, we can just make it non-exclusive. We just don't like to give it to a direct competitor, 'cause if both companies are mailing out at the same time, that can be confusing for a resident, where they may think they're different products and sign up for both, and they don't need both. The one thing that our letter always states that we are a separate company, that the city has just partnered with us to make the program available. But again, even if we enter into the agreement and the letter is not, we can't come to an agreement on the letter, we never mail. So in the agreement, it says the city will review and approve all of the marketing material. Unfortunately, our program is only available through that city partnership. Without the use of that logo, we would never be able to offer the program that we do with the generous benefits for the lowest premium possible, so.
Understand.
And we can do that contingent on, Tom, taking a look at whatever material that's sent out and...
I can tell you, I don't think I'm ever gonna be comfortable with a third-party's advertisement going out on city letterhead. That doesn't mean the council can't approve it, that just means that if it's contingent upon my approval, I'm never gonna be comfortable with a third-party for-profit company's literature going out on city letterhead.
So to kinda, it's not the official letterhead. The city will provide like a JPEG or something of the logo. Typically, it is just the cities at the top, but we have done in some cities, which we can do, you know, the City of Durant in partnership with us, we can do that, but it has, the contingency, it has to be somewhere.
Well, I see 14 cities, I guess, that are currently utilizing your services. I understand the city attorney's concern. I don't personally see it as an issue, but that's my opinion.
I have to agree with the city attorney on this. I have a problem with our letterhead, it could be very misleading, I think, to the citizens. It would look like this is something that's being asked or told by the city, or sent by the city, or recommended by the city.
Yeah, I do, obviously, I do understand the concerns. Unfortunately, that's our business model, and we never, it's only available through that partnership for lots of reasons, but we really try our best. We've been working strictly with municipalities since 2010, and our letter is ever-evolving, taking the feedback from all of our partners to really make sure that it's a letter that is not confusing for a resident. We want to make sure that they're well aware that the city has just partnered with us to make the program available. We are the provider. We have a frequently asked questions on the backside, that kinda, one of those questions is surrounded about that, as well as we can issue any type of press release in any media of choice, or source of your choice, really, you know, going into more detail about that, letting residents know that they will be receiving a letter. It is not mandatory, it's just a program that is now available. Same thing, we can provide information for your website or social media page, more importantly, that will direct them all to us with any types of questions. We do not want them to think that the city is providing the service, that's why we handle all the aspects of it, we're just, you know, making it available.
Ask this and see if I can ask it to where it makes sense.
Sure.
Would you ever put our logo and your logo on, or maybe put our logo on it without putting your own logo on it? I mean, kinda similar to what we have here, that's equal, I guess proportionate in size and scope.
We have done at the top, both our city and ours at the top, and yes, we can do that. They call it a cologo, where both logos are at the top.
And I mean, I certainly understand where the city attorney's coming from. I mean, I certainly understand where it could potentially be an issue. I have less of an issue with it if it's, 'cause I don't wanna do something that's misleading, but if it's same-size scope and it's clear that who's administering it, I have less of an issue with it.
Part of his question you didn't answer. Will you ever use our logo without your logo?
Oh, no. So typically, our letter has the city's logo at the top and our logo at the bottoms, because it has the portion that they return to us, only with our information. Same thing, our phone number's the only one on there, our website's the only one on there. But if the city would like, we can do, you know, both logos at the top and only ours at the bottom.
This is a question maybe for the city manager. Are there any, and there may be, and I'm just not aware, but are there any other instances where we, as a city, either provide or sell a list of all of our utility account holders? Because presumably, that's what this would be, we would be providing a list of our utility account. account holders.
You do not have to provide us a list of customers. Our standard process is we use the ZIP code with the four digits extension and overlay that on your city's boundaries, and we purchase a list from a third party, unless the city wanted to provide it, but it's not a requirement of the program.
What is keeping you from doing that now without the city's logo?
So there's a lot of reasons why we don't do that. One is because of our partnership with the National League of Cities, that's one of them. Also, we set up and work with our communities to make sure we cover whatever your resident's responsibility is for those lines, because a lot of times, people will mail out letters, and it, your resident receives them and thinks that they're covered, and then there's a portion that's not. Also, when we partner with each and every one of our communities, we set up a contractor network in order to service those claims, where if we just mailed all across the United States, we might have one resident that needs covered, you know, in the very top of Montana, and one here, and one there, and they would never be able to have the customer service experience that we provide, where they're expected to receive a call from a contractor within one hour, and have that contractor be at their home within 24 hours. That's vetted, and, you know, will follow all of the city's guidelines to do that repair.
Ms. Ashley, I might ask this, that-
Sure.
-by partnering with the National League of Cities and municipalities, OML, your, does that contribute to your rate being very competitive, or more competitive than a private carrier or another carrier that offers or provides the same?
So I wouldn't say it's per se by the organizations, either the National League of Cities or the Oklahoma Municipal League. It is by partnering with the individual municipalities. It does keep our rate at a certain price, because obviously, it does allow us to reach a higher amount of residents, but that in turn allows us to offer the more generous coverage for the lowest premium, where most other people have service fees or deductibles, or limit the number of times that you can call.
Any other questions for Ms. Ashley or city manager? I think, I think potentially, it's a good service to provide. I think the citizens can, I think we need to give them a little credit for being able to figure out if they want this or not, and who it's from. I mean, that's, I see it as an opportunity for folks to have a look at some coverage that may not be available, or has not been available, and it's up to them to choose the coverage or not. Any other discussion or questions? Are we at a time for a motion?
Sorry, last question. And I ask if he was comfortable, because it can be him. At the very bottom, it says city logo and letterhead advertising billing and marketing billing, and it's just signature by city official.
So we sign our letter from the city as a whole, introducing the program. So it would say, "The city of Durant," not a specific person.
Well, I thought, talk about making it even more confusing, you're gonna have Tim Rundell, city manager, sign on the bottom of it.
But we can also have that signed by us, too, so that's, we, if we do sign it, it's the head of our customer service department, so that's not a, not a problem. And we can even remove that from the agreement before you sign it, so.
Tim, you have anything to add?
Other than, like I said, I was aware of this program. It's been around for about eight years, and I don't think the National League of Cities, Oklahoma Municipal League would be supporting a program in which their communities were having a lot of issues with, and I wanted to kind of take a wait-and-see kind of approach to it, to see if it's something that had some success and had some abilities to offer good customer service. As somebody who owns an old house and has dealt with home warranties several times, sometimes when you call those home warranty folks, it seems like they do everything within their human capacity to not pay your claim, and it gets very, very frustrating to pay that. I think ours is about $600 a year right now, is what we pay for one, and it's very frustrating. And it'd be nice to have a program where you didn't have to jump through all the hoops.
Any other comments, any other questions? If not, are we at a time for a motion, please?
Looking at the attachments here, would we just be approving the marketing agreement?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the marketing agreement. Second.
Motion and a second. For item number 5F. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Nay.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye. Motion carries. Item five, thank you, Ms. Ashley. Item 5G, consider approval of authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with alliance work partners to provide and manage an employee assistance program with a six-visit-per-issue model at $1.81 per employee per month, or take other appropriate action. Greg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. One of our responsibilities to our employees has been a quality employer, and some of that is to ensure that the employees have the resources that they need to be able to deal with issues that they're facing every day, that can help them be better employees to come to work and address those issues. An employee assistance program does just that. And we went out for, requested proposals for a full-service EAP, and received three vendors that sent proposals back, both on a three-model, a three-visit model and a six-visit model. We felt that a six-visit model, in doing some analysis and research, covers about 80% to 90% of clients that go and have a specific issue. And this can range from any gamut of issues related for counseling. They also have the ability to do some online counseling, do some web resources, but it covers not only emotional, financial, elder care, healthcare, wellness issues, and the program provides for supervisory training on how to deal with employees that may need assistance and identifying those employees to help encourage them to get the assistance that they may need, or employees that say, "I have an issue, but I don't know where to go, who to contact." It's voluntary, and it's completely anonymous. The city has absolutely no record of what an employee calls, what they called about, or anything. We get three, they saw, you know, three instances were addressed this month, and that's the report the city gets. But it does provide an opportunity for resources to be made available to employees. And so, we just felt that it was important to provide an opportunity to be a quality employer and provide those resources to make employees address those issues that they may be facing day-to-day. Doesn't really impact their work, or be affected from their work, but it can impact their work. So it was just, it's a good model and a good service to be able to provide our employees. And again, staff feels, and in management, it's a good tool to be able to provide employees, and it's inexpensive to be able to provide that security to employees. Happy to answer any questions.
This is a benefit not in place at this time, right?
Correct. Now, we had a contract for some counseling that's expired, but it was limited to just some counseling services on a pay-for-per basis, because this is actually much broader in scope.
A good benefit, and I, I think we should keep in mind that, as you mentioned, the services are pretty broad, legal, financial, wellness. I'm missing probably a couple more, but counseling, et cetera, but EAP programs are becoming more standard, I think, as an employee benefit.
Well, and this also provides for critical incidents, so critical incidents counseling, so they will actually send a counselor if we have a critical incident, or police or fire, when they have to deal with specific issues, whether it's coming across a significant crash, or a domestic, or a shooting, then, you know, that has psychological impact on those first responders. And this actually provides an opportunity for them to get counseled, not only as a group, as an after-incident or debriefing, but also then one-on-one, because the psychological health of their first responders ends up taking a big impact when they have to deal with those first responder, those critical incidences, when they're the first on the scene, and they see those impacts. It can be traumatic, and I think it's important for us to recognize that and ensure that they get the tools they need to be able to work through those.
Any questions for Greg? City manager, do you have anything to add to that, or?
No, I just think this would be a good tool, as Mr. Buckley had stated, for our employees and for some of the training that we can receive from them as well.
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Greg. Item 5H, consider approval of ordinance 1870, an amendment to code sections on sign regulations, metal buildings, and building facades, and screening requirements. Mr. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this ordinance, the goal is to clean up some of our confusing code language. We had, in section one, duplications of language in multiple subchapters, and then modernizing a few details in other ways. So three, three issues are covered in this ordinance within our city code, sign regulations, metal buildings and building facades, and screening requirements, or fencing. And looking at that redlined copy, the section one is the largest, but the vast majority, I'm not, I'm not creating any new language, I'm just consolidating what we had as a subsection within our zoning code on sign detail, consolidating that into our regular chapter, chapter 159 for sign regulations. So whenever someone would come in asking for a sign permit, we would have to consult two sections of our code, which was confusing, because certain details were in one without the other, but there was duplication. So all of the scratch-through that you see at the beginning is, because I looked through item, item by item, subheading by each letter and number, the scratch-throughs in the chapter 157 exist in 159. So that's the vast majority of that first bulk. On page four of this first section, it specifies the highway overlay district, and I considered that the highway overlay district, because it's mapped, it's part of zoning, it connects to the zoning district, so it should stay in the zoning code. So I left that.
Matt, excuse me?
Yes.
Without, if there's no objections, I have a question already.
Sure.
Did I understand you to say, "All of 157 is lined out, but it's also in one, every word of that section is in 159?"
Correct.
Okay.
And we're, so chapter 159 is sign regulations, the entire chapter, and chapter 157 is the zoning code as a whole, which is, which has many subchapters. So 157 dot 148 is where that sign regulations subchapter started, and it was confusing because we had the sign regulations subchapter, but we also had a sign regulations chapter.
159.
I'm sorry?
In 159.
Correct.
Okay, understand.
Correct. So page, page four, the highway overlay district stays in the zoning code. The tables that you see, which are at the end of this portion, the tables that are scratched out, were exactly, were already in chapter 159. And then on page 12, that's where chapter 159 begins, and, thanks Byron, and the lines in red, the text in red, is the pasted text from chapter 157. And anything new, I'll specify as such, there are only a few details new, because signs are covered by the First Amendment, and I didn't want to touch the First Amendment without, yeah, more heavy analysis. So on page 15, adding the definition for mural, because our entire city code never defined a mural, so giving the International Sign Code's general definition of a painting or other work of art executed directly on a wall, I thought that was, that would be On that note, on murals, I added a slight detail, because up to now, all of the, all murals have been taken to you all as resolutions, and page 23, if you could scroll to 23, on the bottom, this is basically exceptions to prohibited signs, that a mural, except as may be approved by resolution of city council, is how it reads now, but I was curious if you all would be, if you all be, I think it's a benefit to add the Arts and Cultural Committee, Arts and Cultural Advisor Committee, item that you all just had tonight, didn't know if that language would be beneficial to, to add the, this advisory committee as a body that could receive resolutions for every mural, but then maybe the most significant murals do reach you all. I'm not sure exactly how that plays out, but I, murals connect to arts and culture, so added that language. And that covers it with the signs, with section one. And we, the signs go all the way to page 33. So if you all have any questions, I can pause here, or keep going with metal buildings?
Well, do we need clarification on the murals? I mean, that was an either-or thing.
Tom, I mean, you said by the Arts Advisory Committee or council resolution, is that ambiguous?
I mean, essentially, you have to decide as the council, whether a mural is so distinct from another type of sign that it requires council approval. Right now, the rest of the signs in town don't require council approval. So, I mean, I guess that's, that's the distinction, is do you leave that up to an administrative function like the rest of the signs, or is that something that, is a type of sign that the council wants to have an input in? It would be the only type of sign that the council has an input in, but I guess.
We could take it out for now, if you'd like revisit.
I don't have a problem with that, I just, I think it could be more definitive, one or the other.
Okay.
I mean, the Arts Committee's fine. I mean, who, I'm not a lawyer like Tom over there, but, I mean, the word "or" means somebody else, too, so.
Well, at some point, if it's got the word "or," if it's the committee or council, somebody's having to decide whether to send it to the committee, or whether to send it to council, and that's gonna be sort of an arbitrary decision without some additional factors. If you want, it goes to the council if it's of a certain size, or if it's in a certain location, but otherwise, it's just "or," and there's nobody set to make that decision unless it's Matt's office, and then it's, it sort of becomes arbitrary. So, I mean, it's a council decision, but it's really, that's probably more administrative than the council. than the council should be dealing with, frankly.
I think that's where we're going.
But the, yeah, most significant murals, you'll, I'm sure we'll all hear about, and they should be recognized at the highest level, so, I thought it was at least a good topic for conversation, to put the language in there. If there are no other questions on section one, I'll move to section two, which, starting on page 33, and these, section two and section three will go quickly, unless there are a lot of questions, but section two is section 157 dot 060 of our code, metal buildings and building facades in all commercial, single-family residential and health facilities districts. The detail of metal facade treatment on buildings has improved since this ordinance was passed in, sorry, 2005. So, considering, I talked with an architect who's part of our Board of Adjustment for the city, as well as doing research on my own, and because of several examples that have come through my office, it seems prohibitive, the language that exists now. On page 34, number four is disallowed materials, metal siding, and then it, in parentheses, standing seam panels, aluminum siding, art panels, and then mirrored or reflective glass. All of those really do have a place, pending review and discretion of Community Development Office Building Inspector. If it complies with international building codes, it's really up to just the discretion of city staff and you all, in helping me figure out this language. So, because of the research and talking with another city-appointed official, I added on number three, architectural metal siding. So, with that detail, architectural, it does have a higher level of, higher aesthetic than just listing metal siding in general, as disallowed material. So, anything significant does end up coming, does come through my office when it's significant construction, not necessarily just facade, changing out the exterior facade of a building, but having this, and having our building official on staff, I think this opens doors to more modernized language on what materials are out there. And taking away disallowed materials helps open that door. We've seen a few issues with people giving examples of what they've done in other cities, and showing those examples, and it really does have a convention in modern-day architecture. So, that's the main change there, and that we listed as acceptable materials and take out disallowed materials. Any questions on that section?
That was going to be my question. Does architectural metal siding, does that have a pretty standard industry language?
I found it on all suppliers that I researched. It was regional and national levels of listing it as architectural metal siding, as opposed to, like, when I did a search for metal siding, the, like, the wavy, undulating tin roof, and someone putting that on the side of a building came up, the image of a tin roof on the side of a building for metal siding, and then architectural metal siding has uniform ribbing, and just, it looks a little, looks more polished. So, it did seem to have a standard to me and to a Board of Adjustment architect.
And that's what I was just trying to understand, since we were putting disallowable metal siding, I didn't want someone to interpret that wrong, and I think that's what it's going to come down to, is just interpretation.
Mm-hmm. And it seems like when the existing language was written in 2005, it was interpretation that metal siding was bad, that all metal siding was bad.
Matt, we got a question. Is this going to change the requirements regarding, you know, building frontage, as far as, you know, at this point, we require some sort of masonry? Is this now allowing an architectural metal siding in place of what previously was required to be masonry?
It is, in the list of acceptable materials. The percentages are mentioned earlier in this section, 100% of the front, 25% of the second and third sides, but the important language in A, this section A, the purpose is to preserve historical, cultural, architectural importance, preserve architectural character and development patterns compatible with new construction, respect the original architectural character and development patterns. And that's, that's very general language, and I feel that interpretation of that section A could really be applied when you're looking at the context of what buildings are around it, what zone it's in, that we really, that's where oversight strength lies. And then, acceptable materials is just a guideline, that they have to follow A, but they can choose, within reason, any of the materials listed under acceptable materials, but they have to conform to the character and development patterns.
I just wonder if there should be any consideration as to, and obviously, I'm not an architect, just my opinion, is, I understand what we're talking about, we're talking about, let me get back to it, the architectural metal siding, just trying to think of more up-to-date examples of where that's typically used, is it's typically not used 100%, and I just, I'm just curious to what the aesthetic effect would be if there's multiple buildings, or maybe a large building, where they're using it 100% versus a few places I can think of, it's used in combination with other things, glass, brick, and I'm just curious to see whatever your opinion, or what you think, that, I understand why we're doing it on other sides, that obviously, it's a money-saving thing, I'm just wondering, should we have the opposite effect, so it's just not a, something covered, architectural metal siding on the front, and do the opposite to where it can be up to 75%, and 25% has got to be something else, brick, so it's not just, I just think if they did this on downtown, in one of the, somewhere downtown, something like that, might not look too aesthetically pleasing.
Sure, that, yeah, that's understandable, and it depends on the voice and the culture of a community, really, and you look at the different scales of neighborhoods and where you're at in town. As you're, as you're speaking, I'm remembering, I'm realizing again, that the title of this section is these facades that we're talking about in all commercial, and I took out single-family, so residential in general, and health facilities districts, so I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if I should revisit, and, at least in the residential realm, that commercial and health, providing, like, opening the door to aesthetically pleasing, considering cultural context of development, metal buildings, and commercial and health districts, but not necessarily residential.
Right, and I may be overthinking that, but I'm sure it's something that probably would naturally happen with architects, but.
Yeah, I mean, I've, it depends on the community, I mean, we have, we have a nice, yeah, we have a nice, traditional housing stock, architecturally, and to see a metal building, a metal house pop up would be strange, now that I'm thinking out loud. So, if it's okay, could I maybe withdraw this? Or withdraw the section, I mean?
We can table until next month?
We can come back with maybe some photos and some more examples of what you're discussing here.
Okay, sure.
Can you make a motion, table?
Well, are we?
Just section.
We are through, you're through with your entire presentation?
No, there is a third section as well, but.
We're all under one motion here, or under.
Okay.
One agenda.
It's under one ordinance, so, okay.
Are we can go ahead?
I'll just make a motion to table.
Have a motion to table.
Second.
And a second.
Okay.
Any further discussion or questions? Not, clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries, I think you kind of have the direction of the questions.
Yes, thank you.
To check out, okay.
I think I shot myself in the foot in a good way.
Five I is consider approval of resolutions to update the City of Durant fee schedule. I one, resolution 2018 dash 30, to include new beverage garden permit fee.
So, I one is to basically close out the administrative process of putting in the new, the new beverage garden ordinance that you all approved last month, that a beverage garden in conjunction with a special event happening in town, it's basically two permits required, and that second permit, in order to process the application, determine the level of appropriateness and approval or denial, has been determined at $50. And the beverage garden permit process exists within the city clerk's office, and I coordinated with them, determined that $50 would be an appropriate charge to process, research, have conversations with applicant, and I'm working with IT and city clerk's office to update the permit, the permit that's available online for applicants. So, $50 is in conjunction with the beverage garden permit that was approved last month. Tom, can we make one motion to cover both resolutions?
I think they probably need to be a motion each.
Okay, move to approve, resolution 2018 dash 30.
Second.
Motion and a second on 2018 dash 30. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries, item I two, five I two, resolution 2018 31, to update certificate of compliance fee.
So, in the last month, a determination of actual cost for someone to apply for a certificate of compliance, and then primarily the fire marshal and building official are the first two contacts for that compliance certificate, and thinking of the actual costs of them determining what the applicant wishes to do on a property or business, do the research, go do a walkthrough if needed, an inspection if needed, that $100 was determined, and I talked with the fire marshal and building official, and they agreed to this amount. It is upping, right now, we do have a certificate of compliance application fee, which is $50, but really didn't cover the costs after talking with fire marshal and building officials, so going from $50 to $100 is what I'm asking here.
Any questions for Matt? Are we ready for motion?
Move to approve, resolution 2018 dash 31.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Matt. Item 5J, consideration to accept a $5,000 grant award from the Nancy Lieberman charities received through the U.S. Department of Justice 2018 COPS dash Community Oriented Policing Services program to support local law enforcement and community relations efforts. Ms. Becca Collins.
Hi, good evening, and, that's okay, don't let my husband know, though. Before I speak, if you would allow me, mayor, I'd like to make a quick comment. I want to say how proud I am to be a part of this city that acknowledges our flag, our military, and allows us to have open prayer and the freedom of all that, so I think we should all acknowledge that that's a big deal.
Amen.
Okay? In June, our city received a beautiful kids and cops dream court at Carl Albert Park, valued at $30,000 from the Nancy Lieberman Foundation, or Nancy Lieberman Charities Foundation, and since that time, the organization applied for an $80,000 grant through the COPS Foundation to provide money to different communities, and boys and girls clubs across their area, to enhance what they've already done with the court. So, they are granting the Durant Police Department with $5,000 to be utilized with that court, they can either, they can either buy basketballs, T-shirts, pay overtime to police officers to have activities with the youth in the community, and Durant was selected to participate in that program, so, I don't know if Chief Howser wants to say anything else about that.
Nancy Lieberman's been good to Durant. Made a personal appearance here, and our basketball court, and a great supporter of young people, kids, and law enforcement chief.
Oh, yes.
Becca's absolutely right, this is an awesome opportunity. You know, we haven't quite yet determined what we would do with the grant funds, but, and it's an outstanding opportunity to interact with children of Durant. The court in and of itself was outstanding, that whole process was amazing, and I think we're lucky to be selected to continue that through the community policing. It's exciting, it's an exciting time for us to be able to do something, interact with the children, looking forward to it.
Are we at a place to consider a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion and a whole bunch of seconds. Clerk will record the vote. Well, I just want to say, we need to be sure that Becca and chief, that we recognize Nancy Lieberman in some way from the City of Durant and our citizens. Clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Item 5K is consideration to accept a $2,000 Public Works Safety Equipment Grant Award from the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, O-MAG, to purchase gas detectors for Public Works Department. Becca.
Okay, at the request of our Public Works Department, James Dalton and Chief Joines, this item was identified as a great need for our Public Works Department, and we applied for the grant. It's a small one, but $2,000 helps to purchase these, it's four gas detectors that they can use when they're in the trenches on site, so, I don't know if the other guys want to say anything, but.
Do we have a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second. Clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Item 5I, consideration to submit grant application to the National Fitness Campaign in the amount of $30,000 for partial funding to build an outdoor fitness court at Carl Albert Park.
Okay. We have been contacted by the National Fitness Court out of San Francisco as a possible community to apply for this grant. It is an outdoor fitness gym that would fit on our previous, or our dilapidated tennis courts, that's now being developed into other outdoor activities, and it's an unusual grant, because you actually apply for the grant, and when the grant is awarded, we would receive the grant, and then we would need to raise funds during the next year to complete the project. There's no obligation, if we were not able to raise the additional funding, then the grant would just be deobligated, and if possible, Tim, I'd like to show the video.
Sure.
It's about, it's less than three minutes, and explains what the project is all about.
We returned in 2018 and built partnerships with over 100 cities. We've raised over $15 million to help make fitness a priority across America, and we're just getting started. and we're just getting started. Let's make world-class fitness free for everyone. Hi, I'm Mitch Manajid, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. National Fitness Campaign started in nineteen seventy-nine when we invented the fitness court. Our first two fitness courts were at Stanford and San Francisco and the mayor and Wells Fargo Bank got behind the program. So we opened fitness courts in four thousand cities across America. We're introducing a new fitness court for the twenty-first century and launching a new national fitness campaign. The fitness court will allow you to use your own body weight to get a perfect workout. Our seven movement, seven-minute system allows you to get a full-body workout in just seven minutes. Forty-five seconds of work at each station followed by fifteen seconds of rest. The system is progressive, so people at all fitness levels can use it. Easy or hard, it will work for everyone. You can come to the fitness court and do any workout. If you're training for a Tough Mudder or if you're running a marathon, the fitness court will work for you. You can download our mobile app, learn our routines, and take some of the fitness challenges. This will allow you to compete on the fitness court against your own score and against your friends. Campaign partners and sponsors will be providing exciting new elements in twenty nineteen. Digital training moves to Apple Watch audio guides, regional training camps in eighteen cities, fitness court classes nationwide, the fitness court challenge series with local, regional, and national events. We're joining forces with city partners to build two hundred fitness courts across America in twenty nineteen. NFC provides thirty thousand dollars in grant funding to match city adoption and local funding. National Fitness Campaign is a social enterprise and I take no salary, so all the money we raise goes directly to building fitness courts across America. We see the fitness court as the next step in the evolution of outdoor infrastructure.
I think it's amazing.
I love the fact that this is here and it's been here. It's awesome. You can do a ton of different kind of workouts here.
And at the end of the day, we all want a healthy, active community no matter where we live.
We envision fitness courts joining basketball courts and tennis courts as essential elements of healthy infrastructure in cities and schools. Our goals are big, but the need is great. We're excited to work with you to build fit communities. Join us as we showcase the results of one hundred cities who've partnered with us in twenty eighteen. Let's make world-class fitness free for everyone.
So when applying for this grant, if you approve, we would not be committing any city, any local funds. And it would be up to our community partners to, to help raise the additional ninety thousand dollars. We would utilize our current land and water grant that is being utilized at Carl Albert to build the pad, the concrete pad and get, and so we would not be using funds for that either. So it's something if you want me to try, we can, and then we can determine how we want to move forward.
And to add on to Becca's statement, we also, like she said before, we took this to the parks advisory board. They, they are in support of it as well. And I think it would make a good complement to that park at Carl Albert to have, you know, not only the basketball court, the fitness court, playground, we're also looking at adding to other portions of it, you know, horseshoe pits and maybe bocce ball for seniors who want to be able to, to go out there with their grandkids and, and do those things too. So anyway, I think it's, it's coming along really well and this could just be a, an integral part of that as well.
Any further discussion or questions? Not entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote please.
Councilmember Hawthorne.
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby.
Aye.
Councilmember Dills.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock.
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Becca.
I got more.
Okay.
I have more.
Okay.
Pardon? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. End of public hearings. I apologize.
Right. Well.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. First, I've, I failed to acknowledge all of our visitors this evening and thank you for being here. We've lost a few, but we have a rather lengthy agenda. We're about to move into our public hearing portion. That will take some time too, but if there are no objections from everyone, we're going to take about a ten-minute break. We'll be back in here in ten minutes.
May I, will you sign that? That's for the public hearing and then put it up here for them to pass it around, please?
I know you get tired of hearing from me, but would you check this mic? We, back two rows, we can't hear anything. Mr. Buckley, he just as well just been standing here because we didn't hear anything. Thank you.
Check, check, check.
Jeremy has a list of everything he has to go over. I have a couple of costs he needs to go over. Health care, marketplace.
We're gonna be here all night.
Yeah, we're running. I got a freeze, one of those brands. So I printed up a whole bunch of brochures, information sheets, and then basically was good. Now, I think a lot of people are gonna show up and if it's their first time, they pick off up where they're supposed to. Yeah, we do. It's, it's kind of, we had a couple people come up. Family are very sound the balls and Regina went through. We didn't know about her name or what it was. And by the time they get a thousand dollars, they were still in general. But now that I know, but now I didn't get her name. I'm trying to track down the dairy and balls when I can. So knowing that we can send people. It's out. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Nice, Mayor. We'll come to order. Okay, we'll pick up on our agenda at item number six under public hearings. With council's permission and if there are no objections, we, we may not go entirely in order here. I'll apologize right up front to those that may have to have a little more patience with us to get to the agenda item. But had a request and we have a number of people here this evening under the public hearing portion to consider item number six D. And that is to consider an approval of resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight, a conditional use permit for the operation of a community shelter and center at forty-three ten West University Boulevard. And I, I'm assuming we have no objections, so we'll move forward with six D. I'll also remind the folks, we're under public hearing. And one of our agenda items under citizen comments. Actually, we had one individual. It would stay C1 zoning if the applicant were to at all terminate the use in the resolution or if there's a change of ownership, it would revert to just the C1 zoning without the conditional use permit applied. At the planning commission meeting, presented the resolution, and it's for a phased, for a phased development of this community shelter and center. If we could go to the attachment, the CUP resolution attachment, because that's the language that would hold if this were approved. On the second page, first is just generally our conditional use. On that first page is just conditional use as our city code states. And then on the second page, get in, we get into the details of this, of this customer, of this request for tonight. And listed up at the top of the page is the year one, year two, year three, proposed development. So year one, utilize existing building for people in crisis, overnight stays up to 14 people, amenities in the building, small clothing bank, office, classroom, two showers. So there would be some work done inside the building, a sprinkler system would be, would need to be installed, and the gravel parking and drive would remain. And this is through fiscal year of 2019. Year two, prepare for design and construction of an additional building, 3,000 square feet with dormitories and kitchen to serve people in crisis, approximately 15 bedrooms. Applicant will facilitate a four-phase traditional housing program for community. Additional building will not be constructed until paved, sealed surface parking and driveway requirements are met. So that would be, that would create two buildings on this one acre property by the end of year two, with sealed surface parking and driveways. Year three would be installing a retail store and expanding, expanded clothing bank in the front of the building. And so with that development, it would continue as long as their ownership and use consistent with the resolution continues. So year three and on, it would include all the descriptions of years one through three. At the planning commission meeting, there was, the planning commission wished that a business plan would have been presented. There were questions about the location, concerned citizens, we received letters on these as well. There were two formal concerns sent to my office stating the safety and quiet potential, yeah, potential loitering and walking around to neighboring properties, that there were concerns on those. Planning commission seemed concerned about location, but the applicant has provided a lot of backup material to support, and the request hasn't changed. So the conditional use permit resolution has not changed since planning commission meeting. But the applicant has provided a lengthy list of backup material for you all to consider the request. And I believe, I believe that covers it. Yep, just two citizen, two citizen concerns with the request, the time of the memo, and the applicant is present, and if it pleases council, at this time, the applicant would like me to introduce her, and she has some words to say, if it pleases council.
Okay, I think it'd probably be in order, Matt, if any council members at this time have any questions for your presentation up to this point. Any questions? And hearing none? Yes, please. And I'll remind folks that we are under the public hearing portion. I know there are folks here in support of, there may be folks here with a different view in opposition too. You're all entitled to be heard. We would ask that if you do come forward, recognize, or identify yourself, your address, and please no longer than three minutes. But Matt, you would like to introduce Ms. Chester, I believe?
Yes, yeah, at this time, if Ms. Chester could come up.
Imagine Durant information.
And if I could get into the attachments, I could wait until Ms. Chester, if she'd like for me to reference the attachments, I can, after she speaks or now, whichever you'd like.
Well, I mean, I'd just rather, I can, I can, that's fine.
Sure, and whatever, whatever questions, whatever gaps in information, if an attachment hasn't been touched on, I'll bring it up after she speaks.
I don't know that I can read this, honestly, so I don't know. I had paper for him, but I had to change a few things, so we'll see if this works.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
What I had referred to, to Matt, was the Imagine Durant is actually, has a group of people that are actually working on the homeless situation. On page three, year five, that actually state in there of a plan for supporting this program. I just want to bring that out before I actually start what I have to share. At city, or the planning and zoning, there were several questions to me that I was not prepared for, and so I hope to answer your questions before you actually have them for me. I would like to, first off, say thank you very much for your time, and even the citizens that are here, and your loyalty to Bryan County. Whether you're for this or against this, I'm thankful that we have a community that cares about our community. I'm Possible Inc. is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, asking for the approval of a conditional use permit to open a community shelter known as The Mission. My name is Michelle Chester, and I have lived in Bryan County for 18 years. I'm a business owner. I also have rental property in our area. I have been in the beauty industry for 15 years. I've attended Victory Life Church for 19 of those years, and I have volunteered at some capacity the entire time. I have served as the go-to person for our King's Closet, actually, the location that we are talking about. Hard work was ingrained in me at the age of 14, where I began my first job. I knew at the age of 20 that I wanted to help people to live a life empowered and successful. Growing up, watching the cycle of addiction, abuse, and poverty sparked my personal mission, and that is to love people where they are, to push them past the hurt and the ugliness that life has offered them, and to regain self-esteem and a future. While in high school, my mother was asked if she would be willing to take two young girls in. This was before she actually became a foster parent. While they cramped my space and took her time, I knew they needed help more than I needed my space. This was before my mother became a foster parent, I might add. Since then, she has had over 100, had had over 100 teens brought into our home. The goal was to love them and to give them hope. Out of those 100 plus, I have gained three sisters. One being Virginia, who currently serves our country. Carolyn, which also takes care of Virginia's children while she serves our country. And Roxy, which serves at our local King's Closet, or local food bank, and with her husband, Tanner. All have different stories and backgrounds, but the common thread is the same. We received them, we rebuilt them, and then we returned them. This was my first experience living The Mission out. In 2017, I served as the go-to person in a transitional apartment program here in Durant. My job was to welcome the resident, receive them. My second job was to assist them in placement, job placement, providing them clothing, hygiene, food, and support, emotional support, physical support, and spiritual support, as well as transport them where they needed to go if they did not have a vehicle, rebuild them. I then was the person to help them find housing, return them. Why are we doing this? At this time, we are currently, we have on record 15 to 25 experiencing homeless. The range in that number, I want to add, 15 are people that are actually on foot, going from person to person, providing coats, blankets, tents, and that type of thing. The 25 is our local hands of hope, which are feeding people that are stating that they are homeless. These people are either living under a bridge, in a creek, or a ran-down building. Hands of Hope and United Way have calls daily, needing someone to help. They, if they have money available, they put them up and one night stay in a hotel, and that's if the hotels aren't full. This is just a Band-Aid. This number is only the homeless living outside, not to mention individuals and families living in cars with some friends or family members. I can tell you story after story, but we don't have time for that. I do want to make sure that you do know some stories. A lady I know very well, mother of four, actually, worked for Westside Dentistry in our community and the hospital. Her husband decided to drain their account and kick her out, leaving her and her four children homeless, without money. This lady had no family because she was also part of the foster system and had no family because of that. She didn't have anywhere to go, so she went from place to place looking for help and looking for shelter. Dennison was the one, one shelter that she continued to be referred to, and they had no room, or actually, they had room, they could not take her because she didn't have the proper paperwork to bring her children in. The Crisis Center in Durant could not take her because she was not a part of the domestic violence. A family in our community actually heard and brought her in and was able to help her. Again, she had a job, a very well, a very good job, and did not take her long before she was actually back on her feet. Within month, a month span, we had two families living in cars, working to save money. The school system found out that they were living in a car and DHS had to be, had to be brought in. They had two choices. One choice was to either let their children go into the foster system, or to travel to Tulsa to a shelter there that would bring the family in, and be able to keep that family together. The Mission would have been able to help in every one of these cases. If we can be a change and help change one person's life and keep families together, it will be worth it. The last three years have brought a lot of ups and downs. This process has not been easy and nor taken lightly. We have searched and spent many hours with the city looking for the perfect location, from the right zoning to jobs close at hand and that is affordable. We feel that this location is the, is the perfect location. It is completely surrounded by R3, and there are jobs within walking distance. It has been donated to us for a very small fee. The King's Closet, which is the building now, has been helping those in need for over four years now, with no problems in that area. I would like to address the letter from Denny Hall in regards to the Heights apartment and his concerns. He states that the Heights have, I'm sorry, he states that the Heights has been a quiet and safe, been quiet and safe for his tenants. I have called the local police department to find out if this is true. I personally had heard that there had been break-ins and problems there, and I wanted to make sure before I came before you with proof. From May to October, there have been vandalism, burglaries, stolen vehicles, theft, domestic violence, suicide attempts, and welfare checks. That is happening without us being across the street. I don't believe that we will, we will cause a problem in this community. There are homeless people actually living behind these apartments already. They're living on, by the railroad tracks. There's two, as a matter of fact. They don't bother the community, they, most of the community doesn't even know that they're there. The Mission has reached out to the local PD, as well as the Victory Life PD, and is working with them. Our desire is not to be a problem to our community, but an answer. Those desiring change and a hand up is what we are offering. Individuals that are addicts or in mental health wanting change will also gain our help by us resourcing them out. We will not be able to help everyone, and we know this, but we will not be offering help to sex offenders or anyone that could cause problems to our community, or the, or the people surrounding it. This is a great need, and it's screaming for help. Our goal is to be an asset again to our community and not a problem. So I ask, if not this place, where? But I would like to introduce Misty to you, because I think it's vital that you actually hear her story.
Less than two years ago, I was homeless. No money, no job. I was living in my car. I was a drug addict and a drug dealer. I had lost my children, all four of them, one in a car accident, two to their own addictions, and one to CPS. Life had never been good to me. From being raised by addicts in an abusive home to becoming an addict into abusive marriages, and I was raising my children to follow suit. Two trips to prison just to return to the prison that was my life. A life without hope isn't worth living. Everything inside of me was screaming for death. In the midst of that madness, one clear thought broke through. Flee to the city of refuge, go to Durant, a city on a hill. In a world, my world was built on chaos, and that thought alone brought peace. I didn't have anything left to lose. So at the end of January 2017, I drove all night to Durant. The first sleep I had in weeks was in Victory Life Church parking lot. It was suggested that if I went to the food bank and spoke with Sue Stanfield, I would be able to eat. They did so very much more than that. I was placed in the transitional apartment that the church had at the Avalon. No bed or bath was ever sweeter. I was placed under the care of Michelle Chester, who helped me make a plan for my life, with set goals to achieve. She held me accountable for sticking to that plan. I was given advice on where to look for work. I was placed in life groups and volunteered at the food and the clothing bank. Through those avenues, I was introduced to a community of people who believed in me and encouraged me more than I ever had in my entire life. I made friends, friends that were there at a moment's notice when thoughts of relapse came.
He states that the Heights have, I'm sorry, he states that the Heights has been a quiet and safe, been quiet and safe for his tenants. I have called the local police department to find out if this is true. I personally had heard that there had been break-ins and problems there, and I wanted to make sure before I came before you with proof. From May to October, there have been vandalism, burglaries, stolen vehicles, theft, domestic violence, suicide attempts, and welfare checks. That is happening without us being across the street. I don't believe that we will, we will cause a problem in this community. There are homeless people actually living behind these apartments already. They're living on the, by the railroad tracks. There's two, as a matter of fact. They don't bother the community, they, most of the community doesn't even know that they're there. The Mission has reached out to the local PD, as well as the Victory Life PD, and is working with them. Our desire is not to be a problem to our community, but an answer. Those desiring change and a hand up is what we are offering. Individuals that are addicts or in mental health wanting change will also gain our help by us resourcing them out. We will not be able to help everyone, and we know this, but we will not be offering help to sex offenders or anyone that could cause problems to our community, or the, or the people surrounding it. This is a great need, and it's screaming for help. Our goal is to be an asset again to our community and not a problem. So I ask, if not this place, where? But I would like to introduce Misty to you, because I think it's vital that you actually
Less than two years ago, I was homeless. No money, no job. I was living in my car. I was a drug addict and a drug dealer. I had lost my children, all four of them. One in a car accident, two to their own addictions, and one to CPS. Life had never been good to me. From being raised by addicts in an abusive home to becoming an addict into abusive marriages, and I was raising my children to follow suit. Two trips to prison just to return to the prison that was my life. A life without hope isn't worth living. Everything inside of me was screaming for death. In the midst of that madness, one clear thought broke through. Flee to the city of refuge, go to Durant, a city on a hill. In a world, my world was built on chaos, and that thought alone brought peace. I didn't have anything left to lose. So, at the end of January 2017, I drove all night to Durant. The first sleep I'd had in weeks was in Victory Life Church parking lot. It was suggested that if I went to the food bank and spoke with Sue Stanfield, I would be able to eat. They did sell very much more than that. I was placed in the transitional apartment that the church had at the Avalon. No bed or bath was ever sweeter. I was placed under the care of Michelle Chester, who helped me make a plan for my life, with set goals to achieve. She held me accountable for sticking to that plan. I was given advice on where to look for work. I was placed in life groups and volunteered at the food and the clothing bank. Through those avenues, I was introduced to a community of people who believed in me and encouraged me more than I ever had in my entire life. I made friends, friends that were there at a moment's notice when thoughts of relapse came. This town that you have here is a special town. People care. I no longer, sorry, slowly, life replaced my dry bones. I no longer thought I was worthless or beyond help, one of the invisible unloved. I got a job and an apartment, and by April, I had my eight-year-old son back from CPS. I'm no longer on welfare, and I don't eat from the food bank. I'm no longer a drain on society. Now I'm a team lead at United Healthcare for Alorca. I have a three-bedroom home. My oldest son is also here, and he's eighteen, and he's no longer homeless, and he's clean and sober. So generational change had been broken. I was given a precious gift by this community. It was a gift of a chance, and that chance changed the trajectory of not just my life, but my children's as well. I think people deserve the same chance that I had, and I think Durant is a wonderful place for that to happen. My name is Misty, and I am proof of what can happen when you have a hand up.
I have nothing else to add.
I think, it's Michelle, right?
Yes, sir.
May I call you Michelle?
Yes, sir, please do.
Great presentation, a great testimony, Misty, I believe it was. Counsel, have any questions for Michelle at this time? Are there, in fairness, this is a public hearing, are there others who wish to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this request? Do you wish to speak in favor, sir?
In favor, sir.
Okay. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Hello, my name's Larry Smithart, sorry. I just wanted to say that I think this is a good idea, but I think there's also some other things that could be added to it. When I got home from Kosovo in the military in '06, I was divorced and homeless and living in the woods for five years, with no real avenue to find any way to do anything. I think this program would be good, but I think there also should be some access to counseling, pardon me, some job search counseling, maybe get some community outreach involved as well, as maybe some nonprofit organizations to help with these people, because homeless isn't just a stigma, it's a, it affects everybody. And from all walks of life, there's several reasons why a person can become homeless, from the most simplest thing to all the way up to domestic, or drugs, or whatever. And I feel that with proper counseling and guidance, and maybe even get places like Workforce and some of the other churches involved with this, and the community to help out, and look past the stigma and see that there's actually people that need help that might help it out a lot more than what people think. It's not just about whether they're a threat to the community. You could add a curfew, you can have, you know, there's other ways to handle this than worrying about what it's going to do to the community, and I know that area up there, I've passed it a lot, and there's not that much out there for anybody to be worried about. It's a good neighborhood, and as far as crime, that's everywhere, that's not just one neighborhood. You can have the same problems in one part as you go to the other. So, that's kind of a, you know, middle-ground excuse in my book. So, I appreciate your time with that, and I hope you consider this as a good option for the city, because homeless people do need a hand up. I know there's a lot of people that might have, you know, not understand it right at first, but, you know, with, I think that it'd be good in the long run. It'll probably cut down on crime and stuff as well, in my opinion. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
My name is, excuse me, is Betty Calklaser, and I live at forty-eight, I'm at ten forty-eight or ten oh eight North Forty-Nine. I sincerely believe in this, I think it's a great thing. I think it's awesome, and I, this gentleman that just spoke, I believe everything that he said. My only concern with this is that I've been a therapist for about forty years, and I've been thirty-five years, I've been the director of an organization that's nationwide, it's called COSA, Court Appointed Special Adjuvant for Children. And my concern is that we're going to have children in that facility along with the homeless, and we're going to have all kinds of homeless there, and I'm concerned about, I know that there's going to be all kinds of counseling, I know Bryan County, and I know what they do, they step forward, and we, I've seen a lot of that. I started the Crisis Center years ago, and the lady is right, you have to have domestic violence to get into that. But I think we're going to have problems if we try to put women and men together. That's the reason we have Howe Foundation for Men and Women. We have separate facilities for them, wherever we're at, we separate them. Seems like it don't work. We're going to be dealing with drug and alcohol in that facility, we're going to be dealing with mentally ill people, we're going to be dealing with people that's got all kinds of issues, and it takes a while for them to get their feet on the ground. I understand that, but my concern is I want to help them. I think it's an awesome thing, but my concern is for the children that's going to be in that facility. And if we could just have a homeless shelter for the men to start out with, we have, I think, fifteen rooms, it's awesome, I live on down the road from that. I think it's awesome what they're doing, but my problem is that, that we have issues here. We have a Howe Foundation for Women, we have one for men, and we separate them because there's issues if you put men and women in the same facility. If, say for instance, a child starts crying in the middle of the night, what's somebody over there on the other do that's, you know, that's been homeless? Takes a while for the invited to get their feet on the ground, and I think it's awesome what this is doing, but my concern is what's going to happen to the children. They've been through domestic violence, they've, and a woman that's homeless, she's probably not homeless of her own, but she's going to have drug and alcohol problems. So, so I just feel like that I'm for the bill, I'm for everything for it, but my concern is for the children. We are adults, we have to protect our children, and I think that is my concern. It's not for the residents where it's at, or what they're doing, but my concern is that we're having the children there and the women there, and I think that it's not going to be good for the children to be housed there in that facility. And as far as working, I think there's somebody that I'm sure they didn't mention that, or they may have, and they're going to be, jobs offered for them, there's going to be everything. We just had a case last week that, where they stepped up and they filled the facility up with clothes, bedding, and everything else, so they're there, but they were there for children, they were there for children. And I think we're supposed to look after our children, and I think until this, we find out how it's going to run, we need to find someplace. We've got, we've got the Red Cross, we got Minister Alliance, we got DHS, we've got a little bit of everybody that'll help somebody with the children. And I think we've got that facility that we can do that, we can step up. All we have to let be known is that there is a mother and children in trouble, and people just, just step up. But I think that if we, we create a problem, and I think I want it to go, and I think everybody does, but I think we'll create a problem when we start mixing the, the women that are homeless, and we have an outstanding person here that did great, and I commend her for what she did, but we've got a lot of them. But I think that we'll have a problem if we don't have something to where the children will not be housed there in that building for a while.
Michelle, can you, can you respond to that?
Yes, sir.
Are there, are there any stipulations or to separate the men, the women, and the children?
Okay, so what we have in place at this time is a, one big open room. We will have security guards there, as well as volunteer or staff every evening to take care of that. I think that it's important for everyone to know, and if you read the business plan, the FACE program is, people will already have gone through a drug testing, they will already have gone through a screening, and so we will not house people there every day, all day long, that have issues like that. We will actually work really hard to actually resource them out. I have a gentleman's drug rehabilitation, I have connection with one now, that will actually take them for free, working with, trying to figure out a place for people that want help, that have mental issues. Our main goal is to reconstitute people, and so with that, you have to be able to be, be able to get a job, you have to be able to go into the FACE program. As far as the women and children, our board actually sat down just this last week and visited this, and decided, we went back and forth and we tabled it, on whether or not, when we first opened doors, what do we really want it to look like? Would it be beneficial for us to house men and women together? That is another reason why I have reached out to the police department to work with them, and, and have asked them if they would give their input on the safety issues, because we do not want to have any, any problems there. We've asked them if they would bring in input into our intake program, our background checks, that type of thing, so our children or families are not, are not, are not under some safety there. If you'll notice, our next year plan is to build on a three thousand square foot facility. The reason for that, it will be a square. There will be women on one side, men on one side, and families in another area. They will not be able to cross paths. They will feed at different times, they will, they will walk through the facilities at different times, and again, I need to add that those people will be people that are in a FACE program, that have already been proven that they can be there and be trusted. Did that answer your question?
I've got a sister that lives over by Dairy Queen, and I got a mom that moved up here, my mom and dad that moved up here. It's been, it's been a while, they've been here for a while. They used to live at seven oh one West Beach. And we moved up here, I live at nine oh five West Beach, my mom moved across town. She lives over there, by that area. I have problems with people in my own family that, I'm security for my house right now. I really am. I've, I got four kids. I got one that is, this, this has done something to me, I'm sorry, but I've got one that's a senior in high school, face to graduate, she works at Sonic. I've got another one, this, I've got them in all different, I got them from, in diapers all the way up. I believe in the rule of law, I believe in God, I believe in country, I believe in veterans, and I believe that there's something that we can do, and that's from the bottom of my heart. I'm not here to cause any problems, I don't, I don't even want to be political, but I have. I mean, I, I've been out for days trying to help. I've been delivering supplies, we got tarps up, I was willing to go pick up trash, if need be. We do got a problem, if we want to clean the streets, we got to do something about it. I mean, really, we do. And I, and I'm a voice also for a lot of these people I've met out on the way. I've met people that are working, sleeping in their cars. I've met, I mean, I've been out there, I've, I've met people, the place that I ended up at first, I did not think was, I mean, I, it wasn't Ten City, I don't think. I, I just stumbled upon it, upon chance, and the first person, one of the first people I met in this town kind of scared me, to be honest with you. I mean, he pulled something out real quick, out of his, knocked on my door and pulled something out real quick. It was a bottle of whiskey. I'm a recovered alcoholic. I don't know, you can ask my wife how long it's been, but I did it through Jesus Christ, and I think these people are doing something great. I really do. And we got to come up with some kind of solution. There's, I got a pregnant sister over there, like I said, my mom lives at Lazy Lane now, in the new housing addition. I don't even talk to my brother, he shows up every once in a while, but there's people in my own family, my sister. I mean, I'm not running down my own family, I love them, I always will, but we've even raised their kids before, in Texas. And I just, there's got to be some kind of solution to get these people out of the cold, the ones that are trying. There's a lot of them, and that's from the bottom of my heart. I mean, I got, I got a, something I wrote down here, I ain't got much sleep the last three, well, it's been going on for a while, but it's taken from my family. That's pretty much all I got to say.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
My name is Shawna Shelton, and I didn't come here to not prepare to speak, but after hearing all of this, I currently house homeless in my home. I have three people in my home that doesn't, that wouldn't have another place to go. I'm an ordained minister here in Bryan County, and I run a twelve-step recovery program. And these people that are coming, you know, for this, for help, that are homeless, they're coming because they want to change, they want help. I'm sure, you know, we get the idea of a homeless shelter, it's just people that are coming in just out of the cold, but I love the FACE program that these people are doing because that's going to draw in those ones that do want to change. I was an addict myself at one point. I was in the women's shelter here, the domestic violence shelter here in Durant, and if it would not have been for that program, I would not be here where I am today. And, you know, anything that I can do as a pastor, as a, you know, God support to help these people, and with this twelve-step program, that's faith, all faith-based, I mean, I'm all for this program and anything that I can do to help, because like I said, I mean homelessness is an issue, and like I said, I do have them in my house. Something needs to be done, because we've got an epidemic on our hands, that the only way that we're going to be able to help them is if we start giving them a handout and start pointing fingers at them. Thank you.
We are still under the public hearing portion. I would just remind or ask the counsel if we're at a place to consider a motion yet, or do we want to, we can continue with the public hearing? And what I would need to do, if I think we're at a time for a motion, is to close the public hearing, and if there's, if there's anyone else that still wishes to speak, this will be the first call. Yes?
I don't necessarily want to speak, but my name's Sarah Metz, I live at fifty-three, sixty-three Stoneborough Circle, and I think it would be important just for everyone that is here from the community that is in support of this to stand up, just so that we can be seen. And all of these people want to be a part of a positive change, and I think that if we move forward with this, as a community, we're going to grow in our hearts, and there's a lot of scary things about change, but there are also great rewards, and just think it's an amazing thing to try to be a part of, and that's all.
Under the public hearing portion, first call for any further speakers?
Move to approve resolution 2018-28.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second, but we have another speaker. Sorry.
Sorry. We got excited.
We do have a motion on the floor. We do have a second, but we will allow another speaker. We're not closing the public hearing portion yet. Go ahead, Mel.
Okay. My name is Sue Stanfield, and I'm with Hands of Hope. I'm the director of Hands of Hope, and I've been dealing with homeless people for 30 years. And when we first began years ago, and it had always been in our heart not to see that, not to allow homeless people to take over our city. I love Durant. I have loved Durant from the first day I ever came here, which 50 years ago. But the one thing that I deal with every single day is, is people that are hungry, people that are homeless, people that don't have a place to stay. But some of them, some of them we know that we're never going to help. But there are so many of them. I have talked to them, and I have prayed with them. I have worked with them in any way that I can to help them to be able to get jobs, to do whatever that they can do within our realm of being able to do that within the church. I'm from Victory Life. And the things that we deal with is low self-esteem. Whatever reason that got them in the homeless situation, it doesn't mean it has to keep them all there. And we know that, but we know there has to be, just like Michelle's saying, a step up. We have to be able to at least walk them through some processes. Some will never, they, you know, they, they're, they will be homeless forever. But there are so many that will not be, and they really do want a chance. One of my warehousemen had followed a homeless man because he, he was a really good man. He would come in and he would get food. Real homeless people, when we give them food, we don't give them what we give the normal people that come into Hands of Hope to get food. We give them special food that we know that they can eat. And he would go through his bag, and he would take anything out that he couldn't use, and he would give it back. He wouldn't take except what he needed. Well, he followed this man, and he watched him from afar. And this man would go to lots and areas that were nasty and dirty and everything. And he would rake and pick up trash, and he would clean up the area. And he was amazed that this man was doing that. Now, he was homeless. But I had talked to him, we had started putting into him and everything, and I had talked to him, and I had asked him, you know, what's going on? He says, well, he gets a check, but nobody would rent to him. He didn't have any history. He had no background. And he'd been here for a few years. And so we had tried to do, you know, he was living in storage buildings. And, but he had learned to live to survive, and that's what a lot of them do. But we can help them. We can, we can put in them to make them that individual that can be a functional part of society. And maybe not everybody, but we can help a lot. We have people that come to us that are all messed up. And when, once that they're willing to go to a rehab or anything, we get them down there, and we get them taken care of and sent off, and, you know, try to give them that helping hand. And then we, you know, we have mothers and children, just like she said, every now and then. And, and we get families. I've sent families to Tulsa on a bus because they were going to lose their kids if we didn't get them in a shelter. And there was none open anywhere, not in Dennison, not in Ardmore. And so we had to send them all the way to Tulsa. Well, that's what we do. We're trying to place them. We're trying to help them. And I understand that a lot of people are afraid of homeless because they, you know, that will draw homeless. We probably will. We're a growing city. I love Durant. I do not, when I walked to Family Dollar General, and I saw a man sleeping during the day on the concrete because he slept where it was safe, and he couldn't sleep out there at nighttime because it wasn't safe. So he would stay awake at nighttime. And so there's things, there's survival skills that they do. They don't have food. They steal from one another. If they don't have something, they do that. Well, if we can help those people that are displaced right now, if we can get them to where that they have jobs and they, they know that they have a future, they have a support system, and not just, just house them, but give them, give them goals, give them something. I worked with a little girl that had been homeless for two years and began to question her and asking her, you know, questions even deeper than what she was surfacing, and was working with her to try and get identity for her so she could even get a job. And if you could have seen her just absolutely light up because no one had given her any hope of getting out of the situation she was in, she didn't know how to do it. You know, she felt like her hands were tied. And that's all that we want to do, is to give people hope that they don't have to stay in that situation. And so that's our goal. That's what we want to do. I don't, you know, I hate seeing people in, in my city carrying signs saying, "I will work for food" because it's a scam, and most of it is. And our pastor has taught us not to give into that, you know, not to give because of being manipulated to give, but to give because we know it's the right thing. So we supply food. We help people with utilities. We help people with, with housing, wherever we can do that. And we want to continue to do that. We don't want to withhold that. We're supportive of trying to help people do better, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Final call, and we'll close the public hearing portion. We have a standing motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? On behalf of the council, this has probably been one of the most well-attended public hearing items in months. And my compliments to all. Clark will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no objections then from council, we'll go to Adam 6B. Public hearing portion for the purpose of providing information, including an analysis of potential positive or negative impacts, and answering questions regarding the proposed Project Hikory Economic Development Project Plan. And we have with us Mr. Paul Bunce, the interim executive director for the Durant Industrial Authority. And Paul, I'll yield to you to introduce our other guest.
Well, our, our project is moving forward and making good progress. They have applied for building permit, and their plans are proceeding. As far as the TIF, we're also making progress there. And the next step is for the public hearing tonight, and we're pleased to have with us Dan Bachelor and Jeff Saban, who will address the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I'm Dan Bachelor. I'm with the Center for Economic Development Law. Our firm has been, is dedicated to helping and assisting communities in connection with economic development and redevelopment projects. I am particularly excited to be with you tonight for several reasons. The first is, as you will see when we discuss the information concerning the proposed project plan, that it is a very positive and exciting project for the community of Durant and for this area. I'm also especially excited because Durant is my hometown. So it's, for me, it's always a homecoming when I have the chance to be here. It's been a special community. It's nourished my life. And I'm especially pleased to see the positive and nourishing things that this community has been doing and continues to do to make it an attractive, healthy, rewarding community in which to live. And one of the most significant ways in which a, a city and its leadership do that is through the nourishment and support of positive economic development that creates high-quality employment opportunities for the people who live there. You can tell, as you travel around this state, that the communities that provide offerings of quality jobs and quality employment opportunities tend to be the healthiest, most vibrant, and attractive communities in which to live and raise a family. It's an important part of healthy community and family life, having those quality employment opportunities. But you know, if you travel around this state, you also will see many communities that are dying. They're evaporating. Those job opportunities are not there. The children grow up and have no reason to stay close to home anymore. The opportunities have simply ceased to exist. Earlier this fall, I was at a public hearing on a potential beneficial economic development project for a community that's somewhat larger than the city of Durant. And one citizen who came forward to oppose the project said, and I am quoting, "It's illusion to think that we can create jobs in this community that pay $50,000 or $60,000 a year." And I thought, you know, it's that very negativism that kills the hope for a community. So one of the reasons I'm happy to come home to Durant is you've been doing some wonderful things, and this project plan that's in front of you, I believe to be an example of that. And it's another step forward in terms of attracting and creating and nourishing quality employment opportunities for this community. The way you do this, of course, is to employ the tools of Oklahoma's Local Development Act. That was an act that did not exist until it was passed in 1992. And it was built on a 1990 constitutional amendment that empowered the state legislature to adopt legislation which would authorize cities, towns, and counties to create tax increment financing districts, approve project plans to nourish economic development, and especially for purposes of generating new employment opportunities and new economic health in areas that needed nourishment. The areas might be blighted. They might simply be areas that needed public improvements. Or there may be areas that were classified by the state as an enterprise area or enterprise zone. The project area here is certainly one that qualifies under the Local Development Act because it does need public improvements to support economic development in the area. And it also is located in a, an enterprise area designated by the state of Oklahoma. That is an area in which the state says it is especially important to nourish economic development opportunities. Using the tools of the Local Development Act becomes especially significant for cities, towns, and counties because there are so few other tools. Almost invariably, if a city wants to undertake an economic initiative, it has to find a way to vote a new tax of one kind or another, either additional sales taxes or general obligation bonds. So it's not an easy thing to do. The beautiful thing about using Oklahoma's Local Development Act is it empowers you as a governing body of the community to pay the project costs, including the cost of public improvements or assistance in development financing, by using some of the new taxes that will be paid by the new enterprise that's generated by the new investment. So that is the character of this project plan. That is, it would create a tax increment financing district. That tax increment financing district would supply funds for some public improvements in the area, provide assistance in development financing to help support the location and development of this new manufacturing facility, which will create approximately 140 new jobs paying an average of $55,000 a year per employee. So these would be significant, high-quality employment opportunities. And having those employment opportunities means you generate new residential demand in the area, new commercial demand in the area, which nourishes the overall economic health of the community. In a moment, I'm going to ask my, my partner and associate, Jeff Saban, to walk you through some of the specifics of the project plan. But I want to conclude with this thought. Communities today, like the rest of the world, live in an entrepreneurial environment. Businesses and enterprises are making their choices about investment based on the combination of the attraction of the community, the overall health and facilities and life, quality of life that the community offers, and the willingness of the community to attract and support the development. That certainly would appear to be the case with a Spanish firm that has decided to locate in the city of Durant in the southeastern portion of Oklahoma. We believe it to be a very positive opportunity and encourage your support in claiming that opportunity. In a sense, one of the greatest tragedies of our times is to have a moment of opportunity and fail to claim it. When we conclude, we'll respond to whatever questions you might have, but I want to ask Jeff Saban to take a few moments and walk through some of the specifics of the project plan that is in front of you for your consideration.
Good evening, mayor and council. As Dan said, my name is Jeff Saban. I'm an associate of the Center for Economic Development Law. I'll try to make this as brief as I can. And for those of you who know some things about TIF, I just like, would like to go over some of the basics about how it operates first, some of which Dan has kept, has already mentioned. This illustration kind of illustrates how a TIF works. When the community adopts a tax increment financing district, the county assessor will go and it will determine what the assessed value was on the date that the project, that the project plan is adopted and the increment district is created. And taxes on that value will continue to flow to the taxing jurisdictions according to state law. Any increased valuation, taxes on that increased value get set aside into a particular apportionment fund to pay authorized project costs that are laid out in a project plan. And that increment district and those incremental taxes will continue to be collected and expended on those project costs up to 25 fiscal years or whatever amount of time the project plan states the increment district would be in effect, or until all of those delineated project costs in the project plan are paid off. And after, at that point, the full assessed value, including the incremental value, is placed back on the overall tax rolls, and taxes on it are distributed to the taxing jurisdictions according to state law. Dan touched on the eligibility a little bit. The statutory approval process for increment districts is kind of lengthy and a little bit complicated. The city, in this case, initiates a process by passing a resolution of intent that declares an intent to consider a project plan under the Local Development Act and appoint a review committee. And the review committee is made up of members of all of the affected taxing jurisdictions and members of the community at large. The review committee meets, discusses the project, reviews the project plan, makes specific statutory findings that are required as to its eligibility and its financial impacts, and then ultimately provides a recommendation to the city council. After the review committee makes its recommendation, these are, these can run concurrently, but the city will hold two public hearings before adoption. The first one before council is tonight. And the purpose for this hearing is to provide, provide information and to answer questions about the project plan and the increment district. At the same time, the planning commission will also go and make a determination that the project plan conforms with the city's comprehensive plan. And then the second public hearing is to provide an opportunity for those interested to voice their opinions for or against the proposed project. After the public hearings have been held, the city will consider adopting an ordinance, approving the proposed project plan, and establishing the increment district. To recap the project's history, Salem Tube Incorporated, which is the Spanish firm that Dan mentioned, the city and the Durant Industrial Authority have already entered into an economic development agreement whereby the Durant Industrial Authority will convey the, the project site at Country Club Road and Highway 78 to Salem Tube in exchange for Salem Tube having obligations to construct and operate a metal tubing fabrication and manufacturing facility. DIA has, through that economic development agreement, has offered to provide development financing assistance for the first 10 years that the project is operational. And that project assistance would essentially be a 99% rebate of the ad valorem tax. And that project assistance would essentially be a 99% rebate of the ad valorem taxes paid. So in other words, 99% of that incremental, of that increment revenue generated by the incremental taxes. A precondition to Salem Tube, their obligations to construct and operate this manufacturing facility is that the city would consider this TIF project plan in order to have that funding plan in place to provide that assistance. The city council passed the resolution of intent to declare its intent to consider a project plan back on August 14th. The review committee has met twice to review the project plan. That happened on October 15th and October 19th. And unanimously found the project area and the increment district to be eligible under the Local Development Act, and that the project would have positive financial impacts both on the taxing jurisdictions and on the local business activities in the area. And they also recommended that the city council approve the project plan. The planning commission is currently scheduled to review the project plan on November 20th. The project plan itself creates a new 13-year ad valorem, TIF III, which will be the third increment district that the city of Durant has implemented, the first one being Cardinal Glass out on the west side of town. And the second one was the Commercial Metals Project. But the 13-year period is approximately, it counts for two years to have the project actually finished construction. And then that 10-year operational period where the owner, the Salem Tube, gets that 99% of the ad valorem rebated each year. And then a one-year contingency in case the construction period goes a little bit long or there are other complications. The authorized project costs are based on some projections that we did in our office, which I'll cover here in a minute. But basically, the authorized project cost would be about $6.6 million. Five million of that being the financing assistance to Salem Tube, $100,000 to cover some implementation and administrative costs that DIA will incur. And then a $1.5 million contingency in case the assessed value is greater than we project. The project plan also designates the Durant Industrial Authority as the principal entity to carry out and administer the increment district. This means that they'll be responsible for keeping track of the funds, making the payments to Salem Tube, and conducting and publishing the annual report that's required by the statute each year. The city is also authorized as an additional entity to assist. In the event that it makes sense for the city to incur some costs, the city can be reimbursed from TIF revenues at some future date. The funding anticipated, unlike the previous two increment districts that the city has in place, this is intended to be a pay-as-you-go TIF. There will be no debt issued on the front end. It'll strictly be a reimbursement of the increment revenues collected each year and paid directly under the contractual arrangement between DIA and Salem Tube. This is the project location, just on the north side of the new US 70 bypass at Highway 78 in between Country Club Road and the bypass itself. In terms of eligibility, everything in pink, which is pretty much the entire area around the city of Durant, is currently listed as an enterprise area by the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, and that provides automatic eligibility under the Local Development Act. Financial impacts, the estimated investment that Salem Tube is going to be doing under the economic development agreement is between 40 and 62 million dollars. And that'll include 140 permanent jobs with an average salary of 55,000 dollars. There will be a significant benefit both during and after the termination of the increment district to all the taxing jurisdictions. Adding that many new jobs will increase demand on housing. The employees will have to live and work somewhere. So the school districts, both Durant and Calera, will experience some gains based on where all the workers will decide where to live. The project site is located within the Calera School District, but Calera and Bryan County will both experience financial gain based on ancillary development activity and property value growth. And the Health Department, EMS, and the VOTEC will experience some additional benefits from the improvements to the area and the potential job training opportunities that come with it. Economic impacts, increased development, especially development that creates primary sector jobs, has a beneficial impact and impact multipliers on the local economy. Development creates growth in other business activities, other supporting businesses. And in addition, on a temporary level, construction of the facility itself, based on the assumptions noted here, will include approximately 600 temporary construction jobs while the facility gets constructed and gets up and running, which will support about $21 million in payroll. And that's not including those 140 permanent jobs that were previously mentioned. The next steps, the planning commission, as we noted earlier, is scheduled to hear this on November 20th. And they'll make a determination whether the project plan conforms with the city's comprehensive plan, and they'll provide a recommendation to this body. The city is scheduled to host the second public hearing before it adopts the project plan at a special call meeting on November 27th. And at that point, the city will provide an opportunity for anyone interested to express their views for or against. And at that same meeting, the city council will consider adopting an ordinance that actually approves the project plan and creates TIF III. After that point, the ordinance will be published, and the county assessor will be notified to determine the base assessment value for the districts. At this point, me or Dan or Paul will welcome to answer any questions that you guys might
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Jeff. Council members, have any questions with the information provided this evening?
For clarification, you refer to it as, I guess, essentially a pay-as-you-go. Is this slightly different than how we did with CMC? I feel like at that time we kind of outlined it, this is what it would pay for. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
The pay-as-you-go means that there won't be any revenue notes or bonds issued at the front end to provide any money upfront. All the payments, basically how the contract reads and how the TIF is proposed to be implemented is that each year, the taxes will be paid under the regular schedule because to the owner, any property tax owner in a TIF district, they pay their tax bill according to state law. What happens with that money is handled behind the scenes essentially. So nobody's taxes goes up and all that jazz. But basically, when that increment revenue check comes from the county treasurer to the city, the city will forward it to DIA into the apportionment fund for the specific TIF. And then DIA will simply write a check for 99% of that amount by a certain date each year directly to Salem Tube. There's no, the only obligation or pledge of the revenue is in that economic development agreement. There is no debt instrument involved.
Thank you.
Can you show the slide before this one, the location?
Oh, the location.
Yeah, I wanted to look at that one more time.
That's the bypass with the property abutting 78.
Steel fab is to the right.
So how many acres are in there?
Forty acres.
Paul, how many, 40 acres? And then what's to the right?
Steel fab is the one just to the east, right there.
Okay.
And then the asphalt thing is across the street.
Now, is that on the north or south? I mean, is that?
Of the bypass?
Yes.
Of the bypass, it's to the north of it.
The north of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the school boundary is Country Club Road.
Yep.
Just south of there.
Calera's gonna get a nice windfall from a lot of hard work here, so.
Gerald's gonna be happy.
Well, there's a lot of housing going in in that area, too, that they're gonna need.
That's, where is that located next to that? The housing that is...
Oh, it's right across the, to the catty corner.
It'd be west.
The southwest from there.
Southwest of that area, just if you go straight down diagonally. That's where they're building the 200, Matt's still here, is 240 homes, I believe.
Yeah, the west, southwest.
I have one question. I guess, Jeff, you might could answer. Do you have any idea of the impact that this will have on OG&E? I've had, I've been asked about this. I've been told that this, that our electric is at the max now, that we would have to have new electric lines and all brought in to accommodate this, or have our system brought more up to date?
Yeah. I think they're gonna use more gas than electricity.
I don't have any specific information about the impacts on OG&E.
Machinery.
Right.
I've got a little bit of experience with OG&E, and that I've represented them before on some power issues, and I can tell you, if there were some demands that needed to be met, OG&E would meet all of those demands, just as they did for CMC. They ran lines on the north side of the city and on the south side of the city to meet all of those demands. That wouldn't be something that the taxpayers of the city would be responsible for at all.
Our industrial authority chairman is right here, Mark Tucker.
Any other questions regarding the information provided again on the TIF?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. On the 600 jobs that they were talking, I'm sorry, my mind's not working. The temporary jobs, and you're saying you're gonna have those with a $21 million payroll. Of that $21 million, how much is actually gonna stay in Durant or in Bryan County? I know it'd be just an estimate, but those are temporary workers. They're gonna be coming from probably outside the town, outside the county. Okay, they'll be staying in the motels, a lot of them will be. Okay. That money will stay with the motels. The taxes will stay with the motels in their tourism tax. The only tax, basically the only tax that we'll see from the temporary workers is gonna be what incidentals that they purchase and their food. So to me, that $21 million payroll, I mean, that's total payroll, but that's an inflated figure as to what Durant will benefit from.
No, I understand what you're saying completely. I mean, they're estimating it's a $21 million payroll. We do know they're gonna fill up the hotels, and we talked to the hotel owners, and we know that the restaurants are gonna be bustling, too. There's a lot of generated sales tax as well with that, and they're gonna be making trips to Walmart and the other different places, too, for their incidentals. You are correct. So I don't know if there's a estimate. I mean, you would probably be able just to back it out on a normal, go to the, I'm trying to figure out some sort of percentage of an average budget that goes toward eating out and those type of things, too. But I think what they're trying to show is that the $21 million payroll of those individuals are gonna be here, they're gonna be spending here, too.
And they're gonna be staggered. I mean, we're not gonna have 600 in here all at one time.
No.
But I was, you know, trying to figure all that out in my mind, and it just didn't seem to fit just right.
But when you talk to the hotel owners and the restaurant owners, they love it when the rooms are full and they're selling a lot of beer, right, Chad?
Right.
I'd like to see more of it spent retail, though some of it, as we all know, our taxes, sales taxes have been decreasing lately, and we need them.
Sure, and this will help.
But it's gonna be slow.
There'll be local contractors involved.
There will be some local contractors involved as well. They won't all be from out of state, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and, okay, but we are under the public hearing portion. Is there anyone else in the audience that has a comment? Yes, please come forward and...
My name is James Bishop, and I just wanted to, if I could get some clarification on how this TIF worked. It didn't, I mean, it didn't give us just a great detail about explaining how that calculation was gonna happen on that TIF. If we could go back to that slide talking about the definitions of, I guess it was probably slide one.
Jeff, can I help you?
So I was trying to understand how the beginning number was gonna, I guess it was the slide talking about the graphs of the beginning number and then the, right here, yes, this graph. So we're talking about an existing tax base. Is that, how are we talking about the difference, the incremental tax growth? Is that just this plant location only? Are we talking about Bryan County as a whole?
Just that geographic area that was outlined in the map?
The 40 acres?
Mm-hmm.
So that's the only portion of the increase that we set aside to, if I'm accurate.
Correct.
So basically, they're paying their tax, and then we're refunding their tax?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not talking about other residential growth in our areas?
No.
No, no.
That's ancillary growth, Mr. Bishop, that the, all the entities will benefit from as far as the ad valorem growth. We've experienced that with the Cardinal TIF, TIF number one, TIF District number one. We experienced ancillary growth over the years. We're experiencing that currently with the CMC. But that's, it was a good question, but that clearly points out that it's only that incremental tax for that project. And all the other growth, we mentioned the 200 and some odd homes, that growth will go directly to the county and the entities that it supports, the school systems, et cetera.
Second question to add on to this, we're seeing a lot of growth in our area, a lot of new homes coming in. We're really, I feel like, as a resident, I feel like we're really taxing our, I just felt we're busting at the seams in a lot of different places, a lot of different areas. One of them is our school systems, our utilities. I think somebody, you know, mentioned OG&E. I felt like, and I know in our business into ourselves, I know we've been seeing some issues with OG&E already, and one of our, one of my connections, one of my clients was saying that OG&E, I don't know if you have any idea about this or not, but OG&E a couple of instances recently has said they have been in catastrophic conditions, meeting our demands since we've had the CMC plant coming online. So I don't know if we're aware of having more need for them to have, you know, better improvements in our area.
I'm in communication with Robert Holliday, at least on a weekly basis. He's our OG&E rep, and never once does those words come across.
Well, I think they're not public.
As a matter of fact, I would encourage you and every, everyone that has access to the Durant website and Facebook page to watch the video regarding OG&E and the CMC and the growth in Durant. And I don't think anyone will have any question about OG&E's capabilities and what they've done, not only for Durant but across the state. I'd encourage you and anyone that might be interested to watch that video, and that'll answer any questions, I feel like, regarding OG&E.
Okay. Is there any, how is the council looking to address our other utility needs, for example? So I know like this is gonna, I guess this is probably a larger, broader concept, but do we feel like this addition to this plant, is it going to have trickle-down effects that's gonna cause service issues in other utility areas such as water or in our sewer plants?
I can address that. I don't, I mean, we're gonna be working getting a CDVG grant to address the water and sewer lines there. That's actually in District 5. Seeing Steel Fab is over there right now, and it's not that big. I mean, I don't think they're gonna be a huge user of our water. And if they are, we still have quite a bit of capacity in our water system, but, and with the sewer, it's gonna have minimal impact, too. Again, this is, they're not gonna be near the, I don't believe, I know, user of electric and water as a CMC would be. So I don't think it's gonna have a significant impact at all on our utilities.
So I guess just informational item, but my business has been looking to do some improvements in our computer systems and backups. And we have two different offices, ones in Durant, ones in Midill. The people that we were working with to do this analysis to determine where to put our better improvements, they told us that our Durant location was not ideal at this time because of our utilities. They said that Marshall County and that area, the Midill area, was much better suited utility-wise to handle any type of emergency backup situations that Durant at the moment, in their opinion, is in crisis mode. to handle any type of emergency backup situations that Durant at the moment, in their opinion, is in crisis mode as far as utilities go, that they will be ready for expansion.
Mr. Bishop, are you talking about the city of Durant or are you talking about?
OG&E electric. So if that's, if somebody else has, has better knowledge of that, and this is what I've been, this is what I'm being told.
I would recommend that you make an appointment, Mr. Holliday's office is right across the street. He, he offices out of the chamber.
Okay.
And.
I, I know that, and I don't know where we're at on a daily basis, but when OG&E came in for CMC and ran the new transmission lines to the other side of the power town and added a substation, they actually gave us a second leg. So now, when power goes out in our town, we actually have power coming in from another direction. That didn't used to be the case. Now it is, now we have redundant source of power. So I have not heard anything about deficiencies on OG&E and they are tickled to bring power to anybody usually, 'cause they get charged for it.
All right, yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the audience? Anyone else? Anyone else? We'll close the public hearing portion of item six B. Requires no action, is that correct? Information only?
Probably so, tonight's just the first of this, or does this one need to be accepted as a public hearing?
I don't believe so.
Yeah.
There should be no action required tonight. At, at the next public hearing, following that second hearing, there'll be an ordinance for consideration.
Thank you Jeff. And Dan, thank you and appreciate your patience. And Martin, you too sir.
And thank you for your service, Mark.
Yes, sir. Paul, I didn't say you, but certainly thank you for your time, time and effort. Okay, we'll pick up with item six A. Public hearing, and Ms. Becca's still here?
Yes, I'm hanging.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, Mayor, as a follow-up.
And let me read it.
Oh.
Six A, public hearing for the closeout of 1-6753 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG-16, relating to the residential streets improvement. Public hearing for the, okay. 1-6753 CDBG-16, C-2016-81. Wait a minute. So, do we do A?
Well, what I was gonna suggest, Mayor, if I may, as a follow-up to what has just been discussed, if we could actually jump down to the, sorry, the C, that would be the public hearing for this project and then go back and do A.
So six.
Six C.
Six C.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, public hearing for the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Economic Development, CDBG-ED, application phase relating to the publicly-owned water distribution and sewer collection infrastructure improvements project in the approximate amount of $940,000, serving the Tubusex Durant Inc. facility operations to create new jobs located at 362 Country Club Road.
Okay, thank you. And I wanted to ask, am I, if I'm correct in calling it Tubusex or is it Salem Tube?
That's the official name, Tubusex Durant.
Okay.
Tubusex Durant.
Okay, that's what I had. And this is a required public hearing and that is part of our application phase to apply for CDBG EDIF money through Department of Commerce. And, and closed in your packet is an estimate from Brandon Wall, the engineer of, I think it's a little less than $940,000, if I can find it. And I asked him if it'd be okay just to say approximately $940,000 and he said that would be fine because it may be, you know, we're close to $938,000. But this project is targeting the creation of new jobs and just as these gentlemen have spoken, Tubusex is proposing 140 new jobs with the average salary of $55,000, which is, will qualify for the Oklahoma Quality Jobs Program. It does not require any local match. The private investment of the 40-plus million dollars would be the, the, would provide the necessary leverage for the application. And it is for water and sewer improvements for that area as outlined right here. And Marty, you might even be able to speak more on where those improvements are going to be for that area? Do you know the lines?
I do, we're looking at two to three different areas. The, the line that currently dead ends in front of Steel Fab is a sewer line that's gravity-fed back to the east. We're gonna bring that up about another 300 feet to bring it over in front of Tubusex and be able to provide sewer for them. We're going to use part of it for a 12-inch meter valve and vault box for the water line that is coming in front of Tubusex and Steel Fab all the way down through there, 'cause now that it becomes potable water, it's something we can use domestically. And we're going to look at extending the line on the very south or north end by the cemetery, on Cemetery Road, across the railroad tracks to the west and tie into the South Second Street where Billy Merrill Park is, to give us a larger volume of water. And we think we can accomplish all three of these tasks for the less than a million dollars. Good enough?
Yeah, that covers it, yes, sir. And I would like to read this just for the record, so we have it in the minutes. "The national objective of this program is the development of viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment and expanding economic opportunities, principally for persons of low and moderate income." Of course, throughout the application process, we'll, we'll be communicating with the, the company and it will be part of their due diligence to reach out to the low-income eligible applicants in the community, so. Anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Becca?
And if everybody would sign, Marty, did you give one up here?
Do we need to ask for any questions from the audience? Becca?
Uh, yes.
Anyone in the audience have any questions regarding the block grant application? Anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience? We'll close the public hearing portion of item six C. Does that require any action?
Not the public hearing, so if there's no comments, you can close that, please.
Okay, we've, we've closed the public hearing portion of item six C.
Yes.
And now, now we can go to six A.
Well, there's two items within, after follow, are following that public hearing.
Six A, one and two.
C, one and two.
What? Sorry, going the wrong way, going the wrong way, okay, okay. C, one. Consider, consideration to approve application resolution number 2018-32 for approval to submit the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Economic Development Application to Oklahoma Department of Commerce for publicly-owned infrastructure improvements, serving the Tubusex Durant Inc. facility located at 362 Country Club Road. We have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Six C, two.
Move to authorize the mayor to sign related grant documents related to the CDBG ED.
Motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Becca, to your command, what do I got now?
You need to go back, please, to A.
Six A?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we've already, for the record, we've entered public hearing for the closeout of 1-6753 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG-16, relating to the residential streets improvement.
Okay.
Does that require any action?
Well, if you would allow me to speak, yes.
I will.
I know, we're all tired and I'm sorry, but I have to go through this, it's a requirement.
You just help me through it.
Okay. The Streets Improvement Project for four different block segments have been completed and they were for West Mississippi, which is by Platter Park, yes. And then part of West Alabama Street from First to Third and then the northeast Third Avenue near the Splash Pad, as well as East Cedar that tees into that. The Streets Department did an awesome job, utilized our own, our labor and equipment and James had proposed originally to contribute additional match over and above our one-to-one, which the total budget was $194,800. We finished at $178,252.39 and became, we were under budget $16,547.61. And there are some documents that I gave to you and I apologize that I had to give you papers, but at the time I was trying to get this completed, there was a glitch in the OK grant system. But it gives you an overview of the final budget, final grant report and this is a very different grant because it was only for materials, there's no wages involved and no construction contract.
I want to echo Becca's comments on James Young and the street crew and particularly over by the Splash Pad and the Little League Ballpark there. That's what, northeast Third and Cedar and they, well, they just did a bang-up job on that street construction, if you get a chance to drive that.
Yes, they did.
So, any action?
There's no comments from the council, I mean, you can ask if you want to from the public, please.
Oh, already made them, didn't it? So is that six A?
Yes, and if there's no comments from the public, if you would close the public hearing, please.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing portion of six A. And move to?
To accept the project as complete.
Move to approve, six A, one.
Second, good job in directing traffic there. Great job.
We have a motion, we have a second? Any discussion? Clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills? Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries.
Move to approve, six A, two.
Second. I mean, as long as Becca's okay with it.
We have a motion, we have a second?
And that's the documents in front of you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills? Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries.
And I would like to ask everyone that has not signed the sign-in sheets to please do that, since we have, we have a skeleton crew left.
Was there just one?
You did, okay, you're awesome, thank you. Thank you.
Do we still have six B?
Oh, I don't know. We did it.
Yep, we did that one.
Yeah, that was the two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, how come I didn't? Item number seven, we have no citizen comments. If there are no objections, would council prefer to recess out of regular session, take care of utilities and airport authority?
So moved.
Have a motion to recess?
Second.
And second, clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby? Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, we're recessed out of regular city council. Let the record show, it's 9:45. Call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Durant City Utilities Authority of November the 13th, 2018. That's the secretary to call the roll, please.
Trustee Hawthorne?
Here.
Trustee Grooby? Trustee Dills?
Here.
Vice Chairman Hitchcock?
Here.
Chairman Tomlinson?
Here. For the record, all members present, we have full quorum, first order business consent items, one A and B.
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
And second, any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote.
Councilmem, I'm sorry, trustee Hawthorne?
The secretary will record the vote.
Aye.
Trustee Grooby? Trustee Dills?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hitchcock?
Aye.
Chairman Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries, item two, requires no action. Nothing under item number three. We'll go to item number four, under administration. Four A, consider approval of utility project agreement with Ameresco for oversight, coordination, management of automated meter reading system projects or take other appropriate action. Mr. Marty?
I think this is the last thing that is a big thing for the night, so. I won't read the, the whole thing to you, we're, we're looking seriously at the AMI, AMR meter system that we, we talked about one time before with the Neptune Mach 10-type meters, the automatic reading system that would protect our citizens and ourself and provide us years of longstanding service. There was some, some miscommunications and some oversights on the last time we brought this through and we, we've changed some things, as you'll notice, and made it a lot simpler. And I would be happy to entertain any questions you might have on this contract that you see before you.
Questions for Marty?
I have one.
Okay.
Marty, it sounds like to me that what we're doing is we're getting someone to determine if we, the need or to go out and, and get the bids for us, is that correct?
Not really. So here's what we're doing, we know there's a need, there's no question that this would be a good system for us. We, we have not, we have not got to prove that at all. What we're doing is we're hiring somebody to take on the responsibility of helping us find the right deals and the right times for bidding procedures for an estimated cost that will be brought back to us. Before we ever sign on for anything permanent, we're gonna be presented with an estimated cost, we're gonna be presented with some RFP options for construction and for meter systems and we're gonna be presented with a way forward.
Okay, so what we're gonna be voting on is to allow Ameresco to do this for us?
Yes.
Okay, is, what are they gonna charge to do this?
They're not.
So they're doing this?
They're going to do this for us for free.
What, what are we gonna pay them down the road?
I, we're, we're not, I mean, that's a simple fact of the matter. Now, obviously, if, if we like it and we move forward with them, which there is no bound tide that we have to do so, then there would be a project administration cost like there is for any other project that I have anybody administer for me. But right now, for this particular effort that you're looking at, there is absolutely no cost.
Okay, so basically, it's not gonna be something that if we go with the, with their recommendation, it's gonna be built into the cost? I mean, they're gonna say, kinda like it was last time?
Be, be a totally separate, and I told you, this deal is a lot different, right? There's no upfront, there's no promise. In the meantime, they're gonna present us something so good, we want it or we won't go. I mean, that's what it amounts to. Pretty simple. The benefit of this is that, again, they are taking care of administering this part of the project. I simply do not have the time to put the effort forward that would do the just job on the front end of this project, to get all the pricing, to get all the RFPs for contractors and for, for meter systems and for reading systems and that's why we're hoping we can use somebody for that facility.
I just wasn't aware that that's what they did.
Yeah. Well, if you notice, this contract's only about a page and a half.
Right, I did.
Pretty, pretty simple.
Any other questions for Marty?
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, the secretary will record the vote, please.
Trustee Hawthorne?
Aye.
Trustee Grooby?
Nay.
Trustee Dills?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hitchcock?
Aye.
Chairman Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Item 4B, we will not take any action on 4B tonight. Okay, okay, oh, okay. Item 4B, no action.
Thank you, guys.
For the record, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, secretary will record the vote, please.
Trustee Hawthorne?
Aye.
Trustee Grooby?
Aye.
Trustee Dills?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hitchcock?
Aye.
Chairman Tomlinson?
Aye, we are adjourned. Let the record show, it's 9:51. No, sorry, yeah.
Late. You can just say late.
And, yeah. Call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Durant Airport Authority November the 13th, 2018. Ask secretary to call a roll, please.
No yawning.
Trustee Hawthorne?
Here.
Trustee Grooby?
Here.
Trustee Dills?
Here.
Vice Chairman Hitchcock?
Here.
Chairman Tomlinson?
Here. For the record, all members are present. We have a full quorum. First order of business consent items, 1A.
Move to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, the secretary will record the vote, please.
Trustee Hawthorne?
Aye.
Trustee Grooby?
Aye.
Trustee Dills?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hitchcock?
Aye.
Chairman Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Item two, requires no item. Action, three, neither does three. Have nothing under item four, nothing under five. Anything under new business? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And a second, secretary will record the vote, please.
Trustee Hawthorne?
Aye.
Trustee Grooby?
Aye.
Trustee Dills?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hitchcock?
Aye.
Chairman Tomlinson?
Aye, we're adjourned out of the Durant Airport Authority. Entertain a motion to reconvene and...
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, we're back into regular session, and we're at agenda item number eight. Under executive session, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to go in, to enter into executive session. The clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grooby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dills?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, we are in executive session.